Council called this meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 at 4:30 PM. We will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Greatest pleasure that I have that I make a motion to adopt the agenda, removing item 11 because it's been vacated. So I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, removing item 11. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Our next item is the consent agenda. Councilman Burton.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign it for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to prove the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda and item 11 was vacated. So we will go on to item 12, which is the mayor's office neighborhood grants program discussion and ask Jody to come forward.
Whichever one you want.
Thank you for holding this special meeting just for me tonight. Nice to see you, Mayor and Councilman and Councilwoman. I'm here to, this is not new information to any of you. We have had fun casual conversations, but I'd like to do a presentation for those who are watching this recorded. I am coming to speak to you about a neighborhood grant program, otherwise known as participatory budgeting, which is something the city of Meridian has been doing with the absence of last year for probably six years now. So thank you for having me here. How do I advance this person? All right. I'd like to run down the presentation. We'll have an introduction, example of program and projects, application process, project requirements and funding needs.
Just, yeah, hold your down arrow until you're there.
All right. I would like to thank the grandfathers of this program, Papa Joe Borton and Peepaw Todd the Boy from my southern influence in Texas. I had permission from Peepaw to say that. Joe Borton and Todd the Boy brought this to the city of Meridian about probably eight years ago with the introduction and put it into play about six years ago. Participatory budgeting is an active community project which brings citizen input on projects that would be beneficial to the community. And we have worked this project historically with the mayor's youth advisory council and the mayor's senior advisory board. Upon Mayor Simison coming into office, he gave me the opportunity as a former project manager to review and suggest any changes from the past projects that I have run. And this is the presentation in which I like to present today. I called and visited with 13 cities across the US and Canada that have had successful participatory budgeting projects. I have listed here 11 with similar population sizes. Can I give you an example of budgets that are out there? I wanted to emphasize that historically we have not had an application process, but something I would like to implement. On all of them, all the projects are located on public property or an easement that was given to the city. This is an example of the program timeline. I would love to see this launched in August sometime around national night out. Kind of get that community, we're all involved in the community at that time, visiting neighbors and neighborhoods. And it would be a great time to launch this. I would like to see a mandatory workshop and application registration for those that are interested, either individuals or groups of people and committees that would like to work together through the month of September. Would like to see the committees or individuals work with the project manager, which would be me and other city staff as needed if they need help with bids through the month of October. Voting would happen in November. The projects would come to city council for you all to vote on. And following the confirmation of their project, they would be able to start their projects as they are able to. If weather is an issue, then they'd have to wait for that. The projects would complete, I would hope, the first part of September so we can wrap up all the final reports before the end of the fiscal year. Here's just some pictures of successful participatory budgeting projects that have been done around the country. Successful MIAC and MSAB projects that I would like to highlight were the bike fixing stations that are around the downtown core of Meridian. The fishing dock at Kleiner Park that has ADA accessibility. The memorial garden at Kleiner Park. And those are my three favorite, but those are the ones I would like to highlight that we did very successfully. The application process would require a workshop. And based on where we're at, I would assume that we would want to keep this virtual. So it's something we can view throughout the process. And then if someone wanted to really do something, they wouldn't have to be present. They could then reshare that information with their group if they were forming one. I would like to see them form committees, but not limited to an individual who has a fantastic idea that might be able to do a project as well. They would work with myself, project manager of this participatory budgeting or neighborhood grants program. And then would help vet the projects before we brought it to city council. Feedback from several of you after some of our conversations. I would highly recommend the voting taking place just by city council. I think with people and social media, we could get a huge popularity contest versus a great project. And so my goal would be to have city council determine what would be the best project for the city, for the community. Project requirements, the who. My fortunate advantage of what I do in the mayor's office, I get to reach out to all these people groups already. And it would be my privilege to invite them all to participate. We'd be inviting the HOAs, churches, businesses, schools, special interest groups. And I would really like to see youth and seniors still involved in these projects. The projects must be located on public property or like I said, an easement that would be given to the city. The how, approved projects will be managed by individuals or committees and must report to the progress of their project manager, the city staff. When, projects must be completed within the fiscal year budget and final reporting due by the end of September. I do kind of run my programs strictly, so I would like to see these actually finished towards the beginning of September. So we have that whole month to get the final documentation in. Again, after feedback from several of you, I had initially proposed $45,000 for this project, for this program this first year. After speaking with a couple of, or several of you, we determined that $15,000 per project, we were going to do three projects. $15,000 per project wasn't always probably going to be the best kind of projects coming forward. So I would like to decrease that to two projects max and up to $25,000 per project. My request would be for this program, our first year, $50,000. And I stand for any questions at this point.
Thank you, Jody. House any questions?
Sure.
Councilman Burton.
Thank you, Jody. Great presentation. Got a question for you. Any possible, would there be a possibility that we could choose one project for 50 if it was? Or is it to have to be two projects for 25?
Well, I wouldn't want to see, because we have two projects on there that we had to do too. I think that's where the ebb and flow of the management comes. And we really want to bring the best projects for our community and not just do one project because there's a budget for it and, you know, and that's where. And this is in the conversation we're having now, like, do we have a really amazing project that's going to break the $25,000? Can we do an amendment to increase that budget? And this is where I'm coming to you all for the input and why I invited Peepaw over here.
And I would say to a certain extent, yes, because this is really about creating what the expectations are moving forward. And, you know, we are viewing this as a pilot for this year to help answer some of these exact questions. Jody, we had a conversation and said, hey, I want it to be manageable for her. How much can we actually do? How many projects? Because the intention is, as we move towards districts, do we expand this to do a project in a district at what cost? How does that work? Do we have the capability to manage that? So we are just trying to, I think the main point is we're trying to look at what's a reasonable, manageable amount of work and reasonable, manageable dollar figure for the city council to consider that they would want to do in these projects. So yes, I think that there are, these are things that even as we get into the project, maybe there's some modifications that we make because that's the beauty of the pilot, right?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton.
Just coming from the private sector, you know, there's something to be said, you know, demand and competition. You know, I think it'd be cool, you know, like have, you know, take it a step further maybe and allow for competition and to see who comes up with the best project. I mean, I think that will make the project even better. I would hate to, going off what you said, Jody, having to select a project that was just sort of, man, you know, okay, because we had to select two for 25 when if there was one that was a true winner that could definitely make a difference in our community, you know, giving the funds to that project and make the best.
And there were two, may I address you, there were two great projects that we had community involvement with that was Republic Services. They, not only on top of the allowed project dollars, they then doubled that. They met that. And so the youth were allowed to create something even better because they met those funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks so much, Jody, and I love the idea and agree with the idea that we should have competition and there's a great project that fits the bill. That would be fine. How would this work for an individual? I was happy to hear you might be open to that. Sometimes people are part of a group, but maybe there's just a local parent or a local person in the community that sees a need in their neighborhood. Is it possible for one person to participate in this and, you know, without forming a committee and a huge group? That was my question.
Yeah, I think a lot of the times, we, especially with working with the mayor's youth advisory council, we've had a lot of great ideas collaboratively, but those one-off ideas were so amazing and there are ways to wrap support from the community in that project build. But I wouldn't want someone, if they didn't have a committee, to feel like they couldn't participate or throw in their idea.
Councilman Borton.
Jody, do you anticipate the process to include an RFP rubric, some scoring mechanism that would allow council, open to decision makers to pair apple to apple?
Please describe RFP.
Request for proposal where we'd receive the competing requests. We might have some matrix that might help us make a decision and one over the other.
Well, I don't assume that I'm going to know every aspect as a project manager. I'm going to be pulling in other people, especially city staff to help buy these. I think the more involvement we have and interest from everybody, the better projects we're going to get.
Councilman Borton, to a certain extent, yes. We're not going to put something forward that's not on public property. You know, there will be certain elements to make sure it would check the boxes and including some of the operational side of things that we need to still make determinations, work with the finance. Sometimes may make it difficult for an individual to do it based upon how we choose to do this, whether it's an upfront or reimbursement then process or these projects. You know, so there are some of those elements. So yes, to a certain extent. But ultimately, I think the main, we probably would not want to, we probably want you to know whether or not it checks the boxes. But the value, I think that's where we leave it to council to determine the overall value of the project to the community.
It has to meet, Mr. Mayor, some baseline benchmarks of eligibility, of course. Certainly. Yeah, thanks, Dean. I think it's a great program. My initial reaction was having a cap was helpful. I think if you didn't have a cap, you might get all $50,000 requests. Which forces your hand to pick one as opposed to an opportunity to pick two. I guess it cuts both ways. So I guess my takeaway on it all is make it happen. Stumble a little perhaps and learn and make it better every year. I think that's what made participatory budgeting better. We learned and don't let us get bogged down in some of the minutia you're going to learn as we go through it. So with your leadership, it's going to be wildly successful and probably provide something to our community that the seven of us would go, holy smokes, that's awesome. None of us thought of that, which is really the whole point.
Thank you.
So I think it's fantastic.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have much more to add, except for maybe just to get a suggestion along the lines of the conversation, maybe it is up to two. And that way you don't feel obligated. If there's one that's really stellar and one that's kind of eh, that you don't feel like you have to bring to, that maybe again, as the project manager, you have a certain amount of authority to justify. And again, if we get one and council says, oh, well, what else is out there that gives you an opportunity maybe to present some more information? For the record, I do like the idea of a rubric or a scoring matrix of some kind so that council can understand this is the benchmarks that it hit. And that's why this project is being selected. Not required, but just I'm supportive of that if that's something that were to come forward.
I have been in the back pocket or a gelf that's doing this program in Boise, similarly, she's been in the back pocket for me. She's given me a lot of replicable information that we could make for Meridian. And they do have something similar and that's one of the things we would be highlighting in the mandatory workshop.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, just to kind of piggyback on your earlier comments that this first year, I think is going to require some flexibility and see how it goes and, you know, because I could even envision a project that's fantastic for 25 and you have two others at 10, well within the budget and manageable for three, that we might go, hmm, who knows, you know? A couple of questions though, Jody. One, if you're looking at a national light out launch, are you looking at creating some brochures, whether they're trifles, postcards, flyers, whatever that we can have to hand out to people, talk to people about, do your marketing, you know, that sort of thing?
Absolutely. One thing I love to do is advertising and putting things together in marketing ways. And that's something I would definitely take on myself.
And the other question I have is we've talked about, you know, who's eligible for this. It could be individuals. It could be organizations. What if someone applies and it's an Eagle Scout project? Does that fit within the realm?
That would be great.
Appreciate the presentation. That was very helpful. Thanks.
Okay, council, anything further?
Thanks, Jody.
All right. You will see this as an enhancement in your budget and like I say, assuming it looks like it's going to move forward, we can prepare for an August 3rd or national night out launch appropriately.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe just, I know that we've talking a certain monetary amount for the project, but if we could maybe tag on eight, maybe $15 more so Peepaw can get a new name tag for his door. I'd certainly be in support of that.
And Mr. Mayor, I have to ask, I'm curious about, it's not a Texas phrase I'm familiar with. I don't know what that stands for. Does that stand for old man or what? I'm not.
Distinguished leader.
I was going to ask our CFO if he want to talk about the program, but he's happened to respond in any way he'd like to any of these comments.
I believe Peepaw is much younger than Papa, so that's all I recall. So Papa Borton, it's definitely older.
All right. Thank you, council. With that, we reached the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adjourn.
Second the motion.
A motion, second to adjourn the meeting, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Council, the meeting will come to order for the record. It is May 25th, 2021 at 6:05 PM. We will begin this evening's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Mayor Simmison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If it all rise and please join us in the pledge. Our next item is a community invocation. Do we, is Mr. Hanky here this evening? All right, if you could and come forward and if you all would like to join us in the invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection on your own part.
While we come before you now and we pray the words that Paul taught us when he said, "May the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ and the love of God and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit be with you." And we pray those words now that the grace that you've given us would be with us now in the decisions we make and the way we treat each other and the way we speak. The love of the Father that we as a community would show that love to one another as you've shown love to us. That the fellowship of the Holy Spirit would be guiding to us, that we would judge our actions and our words and our thoughts by what you've called us to. And I pray that this great city, Lord, would reflect the grace and the love and the fellowship that you've shown us. I pray that every day our decisions would lead this place to a greater understanding of these three things and that every day, God, we would make these decisions paramount in our life as we judge how they impact others. May you use us this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Council, our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Byrne.
There are no changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion is agreed to and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Clerk, anyone under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, only signups under that were for tonight's public hearings and future public hearings.
Okay, then there'll be nothing under public forum this evening. So we'll move right into our action items for the evening. First item up is a public hearing that was continued from April 27th, 2021 for Compass Point subdivision H 2020-0100. I will turn this over to Mr. Dodson.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Not sure if you want me to go over the whole project, but I can. Your purview.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I know that we've continued this item multiple times, but we've got, I think, a large amount of the public that are here tonight and if Joe's willing and able to and council's amenable, I think it's probably best to have staff kind of go over this project again for us all.
Sounds good to me.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. As mentioned, this project is for Compass Point subdivision. It's been through, I think I've had it on my desk for over a year now. So it's been a while between planning and zoning and a remand and then council and our continuance this year. So it's been a long time coming. The site is located at the southwest corner of Victory and Locust Grove. In total, it consists of 7.69 acres of land, which is currently zoned RUT, which is rural urban transition within the county. It has county residential to the north that does have a application in process for low density. A single-family residential and all right zoning directly to the east and south southwest. The project, as noted, was heard by Planning and Zoning Commission in December of last year. The commission recommended denial and following this recommendation, the applicant made a request to the city council to be remanded back to PNZ. With that, they revised the plat, removed the request for planned unit development and revised the open space pursuant to the comments made within the staff report and by the Planning and Zoning Commission. City council agreed with this request and remanded the project back to PNZ. The main changes were related to the number of units, which are down to 37 from 48, the overall road layout and the amount of usable open space. And the applicant is no longer requesting a PUD, which is a benefit. This is the planned development map and ACHD map for the road widening projects that are in the vicinity, which is the intersection directly adjacent to the site as well as the road widening of Locust Grove north of Victory. Part of the roundabout project will also widen this area of Locust Grove directly adjacent to the site on both sides, which includes sidewalk and widening around the, I guess you'd call it the culvert for the Ten Mile Creek there. I'll get into a little more detail with that later. Again, this is for annexation and zoning of 7.69 acres of land with a request for the R15 zoning district, a preliminary plat consisting of 37 residential building lots and 10 common lots on approximately five and a half acres within the R15 zoning district. So to be clear, this is for attached and detached single-family. This is not for multifamily. This is, these are not apartments, as has been misrepresented. So I just want to make sure that's very clear. Private streets are proposed throughout the site and there was a request for alternative compliance to connect the private street directly to an arterial, which would be Locust Grove. The proposed uses are all single-family residential, but within multiple types, which would be attached townhomes and triplexes, which is better seen here, and attached duplexes, as well as four single-family homes. As you can tell here, there's single-family duplex, triplex, duplex, duplex, single, so on. The project is proposed with a gross density of 4.8 units to the acre, which is lower than the previous proposal. The gross density of the closest subdivisions, which are Tradewinds to the east and Tuscany to the west, are 4.4. So it actually is in line with that density. If you remove the Ten Mile Creek area, the density bumps up to 6.6, which is still well within the medium density residential, not a high-density project by any means. The applicant is proposing to construct private streets. As noted, they are 24 foot wide and are proposed with five-foot attached sidewalks on both sides throughout a majority of the site, which is not required by code, but is appreciated by staff. The applicant is proposing an emergency-only access to Victory Road, which is required if more than 30 homes are to be constructed. They propose access for this development is to South Locust Grove and lines up with East Coastline Street on the east side of Locust Grove, which is the access to Tradewind subdivision. The access point into the development does not meet ACHD district policy, but they have to modify their policy to accommodate the access into the site because this is the best possible access for development to the site because it is the furthest access point away from Victory and Locust Grove because it's a triangle-shaped parcel. ACHD will not allow an additional access to Victory or any other point in the site. The site, as discussed, has major development constraints. It is a triangle shape bordered on two sides by arterials and on one side by the creek. Has no possibility for future road connectivity for public roads, which is why ACHD recommended private streets and why staff has approved the private street request. City code requires that private streets are to be used in either a mew or gated development and this applicant has proposed a gate at this location here to meet UDC requirements. There is no existing sidewalk along Victory or Locust Grove, but both are scheduled to be widened as part of the roundabout project, as noted. The applicant is required to dedicate additional right-of-way and provide for a road trust for these sidewalks that will be constructed with the roundabout project. The applicant is proposing open space in excess of code, but a large portion of it is the Ten Mile Creek, which does qualify per UDC because it is a natural waterway. There is now more usable open space throughout the site than, and has been improved overall from previous layouts. Staff appreciates the pedestrian connections to and from the central open space and to the adjacent arterials. The applicant submitted conceptual elevations for the proposed attached single-family homes, both duplexes and the triplexes. The submitted elevations show all two-story structures, the two-car garages and finishing materials of wood and stone. In addition to the elevation, show modern architecture, architectural designs with shed roofs, second-story patios with glass railings and stone accents that go from ground level to the top of the second story, which is actually pretty rare. Attached single-family homes do require design review approval prior to building permits and middle. So staff will analyze these in more detail at a future time. At the commission hearing after the remand, they did recommend approval of the subject applications. The public testified, as they will tonight, regarding the density of the project, the additional traffic at the intersection of Locust Grove and Victory, discussed whether or not the project complies with the comprehensive plan because it is a different type of residential use than the surrounding residential and the proposed density. They noted that it was high-density when the adjacent subdivisions are not and, as noted, this falls within the medium-density residential. Commission discussed the density, traffic, clarification on how the private streets meet the required findings. Staff's concern with some of the recommended changes at the time and the timeline of the ACHD roundabout. Commission modified a few of the conditions, which has been taken care of. And the only outstanding issues for council were regarding some of the conditions of approval. and the only outstanding issues for council were regarding some of the conditions of approval for the pre-plat and landscape plan, but they actually have revised those and have been shown here with some of the revisions noted. So there are no outstanding issues. Now, since the commission hearing, sorry, since the council hearing a month ago, there have been, at least as of this morning, there were 22 pieces of testimony. I'm assuming more have been input since then, but they all discussed the same issues that were presented previously. So I won't go into many detail with that, but again, regarding density and traffic mostly. And again, they represented it as multifamily, which this is not. So after that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Cavanagh.
Joe, either a question for you or for the applicant when they get up. I know at some points in the staff report, it talks about, it implies sidewalks on both sides. In other parts, it talks about just one side. Can you maybe walk council through where there are sidewalks on both sides and where there's only on one side?
Absolutely. Yeah, some of that might be from commission and prior to an older layout. But as you can see here, the darker gray is going to be the sidewalk, which is shown on both sides of the road everywhere except this portion of the loop. I believe in older layouts. They did just have it on one side, but they are proposing the five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the road, and I would say 90% of the site.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Counselman Cavanagh.
Joe, apologies, I don't recall. No on-street parking would be allowed then in this?
That is correct, sir, because it's only 24 feet wide, and minimum for one side would be 27 or 28.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
With signs, Joe. No parking with signs.
It was not one of my conditions, but you're more than welcome to add that, because they are private streets.
Counselman Burt.
Bill is nodding his head yes.
I'll default to him, then. I would say that they, more than likely, they will be signed, that no parking, because they are private streets and will not accommodate any on-street parking.
Mayor, members of the council, the code requires it to be signed, no parking for the private street standards, and that's what the condition is in the staff report.
Perfect.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Okay, then I invite the applicant to come forward. You're recognized for 15 minutes.
Mayor, members of the council, for the record, it's Steve Arnold, A Team Land Consultants, 1785 Whisper Cove, Boise, Idaho, 83709. And I'll ask pretty much the same question that Joe asked. I mean, we've presented our stuff here before. If you'd like a full presentation of it, or abbreviation, or a combination, I can do both. But I do kind of want to go hit an overview of what we feel the main issues are and kind of address those, and I think Joe hit that really good. The main thing is, this has been misrepresented, I think, to the surrounding neighbors and the community as multifamily and apartments. And it is not, it's the farthest from that. We're, we're actually, we have the marketing team in place. We're going to end up marketing the subdivision. It is a for-sale unit, and that's why we're doing a subdivision plat. On townhomes, you put them on their own lot, so you can sell them as through conventional selling practices. So again, these aren't apartments, they're townhomes. I'll hit real quickly on the traffic. As you, probably most of you know, I used to work for ACHD. And ACHD has approved this at, I believe, 50 lots or 48, I can't remember. But since then, we've dropped it down from 40, or 50, 48, to 38, and now 37. So what we're essentially putting out for a traffic count is approximately 37 trips in the PM peak hour, which that equates to one car coming in every minute and a half or leaving. Either way, even, even as the intersection stands that is bad right now, this project's not attributing much traffic to this, to the area at all. One point, you know, one trip every 1.5 minutes is pretty minimal. I do agree that that intersection needs to be approved, improved. Right now, I've been out there during the peak hour traffics, and it's bad. It's currently stop-controlled, and they're not timed. And at those commuting hours, it backs up significantly. But by the time that we actually are generating trips, that intersection will be improved, and the traffic won't be an issue there. It is now, and I get, that's why there's a lot of people that are scared of the project, frankly, because it does add to that problem currently, but it will be fixed. Joe, I think hit on the density pretty good. You know, if you count in the Ten Mile Creek, because it is, we're rezoning a 7.69 acre site. You're at 4.8 units per the acre, and neighboring properties are 4.4. So the density on this is pretty minimal. It's not a high-density project. You've seen me here a lot of times doing multifamily, and those are, you know, anywhere between 16 to 20 units per acre. So 4.8 is not much at all. You know, since, as Joe stated, we've been working with them for over a year. Our client has been really amenable to all the changes that have been requested. We made, I think, every change that has been, and I'll go through those changes shortly. But, you know, the developer is also going to be the builder, so they've got a lot of stake in this and building a nice product or project from the subdivision side. I'll go through some of the changes that we've done since the beginning. Again, we lost significant lots. Our density went from 6.24 to 4.8. We eliminated the PUD. There was some, I know at PNZ, I don't know the city council saw, but we had some pretty odd-shaped houses, because we had odd-shaped lots. So with the modifications, we nixed, got rid of all of those. We did add more single-family to it to create more housing variety. Again, the open space went from 35 to 44%. We added two-pocket parks to the site. We eliminated the dead ends and put the lollipop in, which I think is a better design. And when I say lollipop, it's, it's the circle at the top, essentially. We added the gated entry, and we attached pedestrian crossings and added sidewalk throughout. I think we went from 2,000 linear feet of sidewalk to almost 2,800. So we made significant changes, and truthfully, I think it has made a nicer product, project, and in the long run, it'll be a good site. I can go into specific design things on the buildings. One thing to keep in mind with these buildings, I mean, the modern look was my idea, and I've heard some pushback on it. We're not married to any of that. I mean, we can go with a more classical style, or a craftsman style, or whatever direction the council likes. I just, there's nothing out there like it, so I thought I'd throw it out there, but the footprint of the home and the square footage of the home isn't going to change. We're going to try to be in that 16 to 2,000 square foot range. What we submitted was right around 18,000, and I think one was 19,000, 1900 square feet, sorry. So if it's the desire of the council to modify the exterior look, we can do that. And like Joe said, it does have to go back through a design review, so this isn't the last shot at it. Some of those colors that you've seen, my designer told me they weren't fully rendered, so I probably shouldn't submit them. Some were kind of orangey-looking, and that was my mistake. Our intent to submit here are earth tones. So it's more like what you're seeing in these pictures with the fly-throughs. And I can go through those if you want to see them again, or I could just stand for questions.
Counsel, would you have anything more, or do you have questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
I'd like to look at these pictures.
Okay, if you can start from the top, Joe, I'll just kind of go through. So this is the picture at the entrance off of Locust Grove Road, looking north. And if you can see, when we took the staff's advice on making the road changes, we were able to undulate it, so it helped break up a lot of the massing along the front of the roadway. So I think that was good. This is at the north end, looking south. Kind of gives you another idea, and this is the main north-south road. Gives you a good idea of still kind of the undulations that are created by meandering the road. And as you can see also, we've put in raised pedestrian crossings as well. We've been doing that in other subdivisions. We think it's a nice way of getting pedestrians safely across. And then next screen down. This is on the east side of the road, looking at our pocket park. Then again, it just shows you how some of the buildings will fit, and then you go to the next one, Joe. And this is in the pocket park, looking at the, on the west side, looking at the other pocket park on the east side. And it also gives you an idea of the pedestrian crossing. So those are the pictures. If there's any other questions, I could...
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Holton.
Steve, would you mind walking through, just so we have a good understanding of the timeline for this subdivision, if it's approved, and the timeline for the ACHD projects, the roundabout, the widening of the road, and those types of things?
Sure. So ACHD planned to have the roundabout started now. They're currently redesigning it. So their original plan was to start it roughly now and then complete it in November. So my guess is, you know, it's going to be in the spring to early summer of 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, do you know why?
Why'd they change it? No. I didn't, no, I don't know. I just know that we're currently negotiating right-of-way with them right now, and they're, put that on hold while they're doing some redesigns. But it's still a high priority for them, but...
And they wouldn't be doing it now with the work going on Eagle Road. Until Eagle Road is completed, they won't start this project, so that's also...
We would hope.
Now, they won't.
Now, and I guess I was going to finish up on your question there. What was the other?
Mr. Mayor, Steve, yeah, with the roundabout, the widening, and I suppose that's tied to that, and then your project timeline.
So assuming it's approved, it'll take us about two months to do the civil design, probably another month and a half to get the design approved, and then we're hoping that we can get a contractor on there. And then it's probably a good five, five and a half months for the contractor to go in and build it. Our plan is to build one phase, so we're going to be lucky to get it on by the end of the year, first of the next year.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Counselman Holton.
You say first phase, how many, how many units is that?
37 units.
And, Mr. Mayor, that is for the end of the year of this, of 2021?
And that's hopefully, yes, that's a hopeful schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Cavanagh.
Steve, you've been doing this a long time. Once, nice to see you back here. I think you're winning the top prize for as many times before council this year. Appreciate you being here. On the private streets, the piece that I always wrestle with is, we put in private streets and roads, and we put up no parking signs. But if somebody parks, Lieutenant Leslie's not going to come over, send one of our fine men or women from the Meridian Police Department to come in and enforce that. So how do you enforce that in your neighborhood?
Mayor, council, member, cavanagh, what we've done in the past is they have the HOA, and you assign a tow truck company, and the HOA police are the ones that usually chase it. And when you sign it, it gives you the authority to tow it. The other option is that we could look at pulling the sidewalk off one side and widen it out to 29 feet, or I can add some additional parking in here. Each, each unit has a two-car garage with a two-car pad out in front of it. With the additional parking that we provided, we're not assuming too much of an issue, but if it's the council's direction, we can look at taking one side.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Cavanagh.
Steve, can you walk the council real quick through the amenities? You talked a little bit about the pocket parks, and those illustrations are helpful, but... You've been doing this a long time. You know there's a lot of young families in Meridian, and when I see a little gazebo, that looks nice, but I also wonder what there are for, in terms of engagement for kids, and maybe walk into council through that.
Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, with, actually Joe's recommendation, and they're kind of aesthetically pleasing, is climbing rocks was one of the things that we put in here. You know, personally, I don't see a lot of kids using the tot lots, but I mean, we could add that to this if that's the direction. The main thing that we're putting out was the climbing rocks and the common areas. So if you come in off of the main entrance, we've got a gazebo there that is more of a sitting adult area. Yeah, right next to the parking lot. And then we've got the climbing rocks next to it, and then in the center park, up by Joe's hand right there, that is another little climbing rock area for kids to play in. If it's the direction of the council to add a play equipment, we could certainly do that. I just haven't been able to get used very much.
Mr. Mayor. Over here.
I appreciate you.
If I can, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can continue with, to answer Councilman Cavanagh's question on the parking. When I first became the fire marshal, one of the things that Ms. Kane and I did was we put in city code that no parking fire lane signs are enforceable by Meridian PD, even on private property, so they can go in and they can write a ticket against that sign. So that's why I now require on all that you have to use this sign, so that way we can enforce it.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant this time? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, I saw a long line of people signing up to testify this evening. Help us walk us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have probably three dozen signed in, about half wish to testify, and first representing an HOA is John Buckner.
Mr. Buckner, if you can say your name and address for the record, and if everyone can do that when you come up, and you'll be recognized for 10 minutes representing an HOA, you can say the HOA you're representing.
I'm John Buckner. I live at 3877 South Picasso Avenue in Meridian. Counsel, Mayor, thank you for the time and opportunity to be here. I want to ask you to reject the application and instead to approve a rezoning of R8 or lower with 14 or more units or less, and a comparable design that matches the surrounding neighborhood. My Meridian vision reaffirms a desire to preserve Meridian's character. The vision reinforces the core values of guided and strategic growth and being good stewards of the public trust. I see in this paragraph two chief values: character and being good stewards of public trust. The comp plan action item 0307 encourages compatible use in site design to minimize conflicts and maximize use of land. Now, the public sentiment is clear. The current development clashes severely with the surrounding neighborhood, and there simply is no precedent for an R15 in the neighborhood. According to housing in the comp plan, high-density housing must be strategically located to public transportation, community services, and employment areas. If we look at Locust Grove and Franklin, for example, we can see that this R15 here is located next to light industrial and commercial. Over at Locust Grove and Fairview, again, we see that R15s are located next to community businesses, commercial, and light industrial. And again, at Locust Grove in Chindon, we see our 15 again, located near general retail, community business, and limited office. And of course, over here to the right is Eagle, which is notorious, as we all know. What about our neighborhood? Well, you see in this lovely red triangle here in the middle, it is surrounded by low to medium density R4s and R8s. And then there is a small non-residential area, which is just a church. Up in the corner, we see our 15s and our 40, again, following the pattern of limited office, commercial, and community business, and again, our wonderful Eagle Road. Comp Plan 050102 says to support and protect the identity of existing residential neighborhoods. Now, answer this question. Does this development support and protect the identity of the existing neighborhood? Oh. Can I get it back? And not lose my time? The Comp Plan describes urban and suburban character. For example, the urban character is marked by higher land use intensity and higher lot coverage. Suburban character is marked by more building separation and lower lot coverage. Also, according to the Keys to Urban Character, housing is small, narrower, single-family lots, multifamily dwellings, and yard and landscaped areas are reduced. Let's look at an example. The existing Tuscany Lake subdivision, which is R8, right across from the planned developments, is, for example, the Brandon Family Trust. What do you think is here? Do you see a property with narrower, smaller size and higher lot coverage? Or do you see something with lower lot coverage and higher landscaping? Or, for example, what about the development? Do you see a house that is larger in size or more small and narrow? Or take, for example, one of Mr. Arnold's little private parks or pocket parks, which is basically the size of the backyard of the property right across the way. It's basically the size of my backyard. Does this seem to mark the same characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood? And does it protect the identity of the neighborhood? What you see here is an accident that occurred on Sunday, May 16th. The Comp Plan Action Item 0501 is to sustain, enhance, promote, and protect elements that contribute to the livability and high quality of life for all Meridian residents. Now, you've heard time and again from written and verbal testimony that there is a major traffic problem on these streets and at the intersection. Let me just stop right here and say, I was not driving this fast. The playback was just sped up. I was obeying the traffic laws. But when you've heard time and again that traffic is a problem, do you consider it a stewardship of public trust that just simply dismiss the problem as being an ACHD problem? We all know here that the city is not responsible for ACHD and vice versa. But you are responsible for your decision to approve so many lots and zonings today. And what you do today will affect our community tomorrow. So again, how will you be a good steward of the public trust in this situation? Now, safety and traffic are not the only issues of quality of life. As Mr. Arnold pointed out, our housing market right now is kind of scary. And because of this, we are actually pricing out all of our local people. This is a fair point. And it would seem that Mr. Arnold has the product type that is ideal for local residents. If we do a quick search on realty websites, we can see that the average price of houses currently in this zip code is 481,000, and the average income is 30,000. Compare that to the $500,000 price tag that he showed us back in March. Back in March, whereas the current price is 400,000 for 30K earners. Now, using a simple calculation that even I can understand, $129 square foot, which is the average price back in March, times the average lot size of 2,700 square feet comes out to $355,000 back in March. And the price back in March for Mr. Arnold was 500,000, which is 1.5 times the price for a house and its half the size. Now, answer, who does this really benefit? Does this benefit the local residents who make 30,000? Or does it benefit the Realtor? Or the California developer who's not even here today to represent this case? I'm afraid that this development will hurt public trusts, and in fact, it already has in my case. According to Planner Dotson and applicant Steve Arnold, zoning is mainly so that we can create smaller lots and still have an open field, but go down to those reduced dimensional setbacks. So it's a setback issue, or at least it was. Zoning is mainly so that we can get this product type. So it's, it's really about the product type, the duplexes, triplexes, everything. Well, they also said that they eliminated the need for the PUD. Mr. Arnold claimed confidently that he removed that. So that means that you eliminated the setback, setback issue, which begs the question, why the R15? Mr. Arnold also said, we are not tied in any way to the design, which he just restated today. So it's not about the product type. According to the Unified Development Code, zoning is oh, I'm sorry, as you can see here, the setback requirement for the R8 and the R15 is actually the same. Without the PUD, then you don't really need the R15. So why the R15? Well, Mr. Arnold said so himself. It's so that we can create smaller lots. As you can see, the R15 requirement is half of that of the R8. So you can fit twice as many homes in an R15 as you can in an R8. Again, who does this benefit? Now, Mr. Dotson likes to point out again and again that the density is tied to future land use and not zoning. I think this is a verbal sleight of hand and a misrepresentation to the community. Zoning is what we're here for today. It's what the applicant is here for, and it's defined by the Unified Development Code, which is referenced, as you can see, by the future land use and zoning. So let's talk about density. According to Unified Development Code, density is the ratio of the total number of dwelling units divided by the total area, which does not include resident areas that are not residential lots. I took Mr. Arnold's plan and I counted up all the square feet, which comes out to 100,000 square feet. And when you divide that by 37 units, you get, as Mr. Dotson claimed previously, high density. So we have a suburban area being plunged in, or an urban area being plunged into a suburban area. We have R15, which has no precedent in our neighborhood. And you also have high density. Is it good stewardship to approve this? Here's my proposal. We use an R8, which is the, on the high end of the existing neighborhood. And with that, I did a rough drawing. I'm not a drafter, but I did a rough drawing, which basically comes out to 23 units. And at a $500,000 price tag or the market value, that's still not pretty bad, in my opinion, along with all the income and all the impact fees that are going to come from that. And since Mr. Arnold is clearly not tied to the development or the product type, he should see no problem in changing the design to at least match the surrounding neighborhood character. I want to leave you with some final thoughts. On the way here, the hearing notice still shows that the hearing was scheduled for April last month. And according to the clerk, he said he was going to change it by Wednesday. He also called me personally last Tuesday to discuss the application, me alone. And when I told him that I couldn't speak on behalf of all these people who are here today, his response was, well, we'll just wait till the hearing on Tuesday. That was a week. Even if he tried to gather the whole community, he would have only done so in a week. He waited until a week before the hearing to contact me. As you can see in this little clip, there are five Oregon counties that have voted to secede from Oregon and to join our great state of Idaho for many of the same reasons that many Californians, like myself, are here today. We want more independence. We want more freedom. We want more control over our lives. We also know that our planner, Mr. Dotson, comes from San Diego. He has his training and education there. San Diego is one of the most progressive cities in the country, and most Idahoans want nothing to do with that. So let me ask you, is it stewardship of public trust to start implementing urban policies that are driving many people here and out of their hometown? Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Not a question, just a comment. I thought that was a lot of great content. Good information to consider. I think some of it was somewhat ruined by critique of our clerk and our planner, which wasn't probably what you intended, but not the most constructive way to, to present that part of it, because I think you got a lot of good valuable content.
Thank you.
Thanks for saying that, Joe.
Counsel, any other comments, questions?
Next is Todd Eberling.
Todd representing HOA or himself?
Mr. Mayor, no.
Yes, sir.
I can ask for three minutes.
Todd Ebling, 3536 South Lamone. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing us to testify. And I'm speaking for we, the people, people behind me, as well as myself and my wife. So I've been pondering this project for some time now. And, you know, when something doesn't seem right or is out of place, there's usually a reason, right? And thus the phrase, follow the money. So I asked my developer friends and builder friends their thoughts on higher density of, of all levels over putting a handful of houses on that property. And of course, I already knew the answer. I just wanted to hear them say it. You know, they say, don't talk politics and religion with your friends and family. Well, you can add to that, don't talk planning and zoning with your builder friends. And so that makes for awkward conversations at times. I already knew the answer. It was all about money and higher profits in the end. So the question to the mayor, Mayor Robert, council members, and planning zoning is, should maximum profits be at the expense of those who already live there and have to put up with the decisions that are made today that affect us tomorrow and so on? And, you know, why can't a lesser amount of homes be built on that property? I've lived in a big city for quite some time and had to put up with the negative effects of higher-density housing, traffic congestion, and gridlock, and higher, higher crime, to name a few. So in conclusion, we, the people of this four-mile square, square mile area that centers on what's going to become the new roundabout at Locust Grove in Victory, say no thanks to this plan and would respectfully request that you deny this and have it reviewed to a lesser amount. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I do have a question, if you won't mind, Todd. Do you know how much the developer paid for that property?
I don't.
Do we know how much the cost of those units will be?
Well, isn't that beside the point?
It is beside the point, and that's my point. We don't know what it is. We don't. So when you say follow the money, I get that from that one sense. We cannot deny it based on they're making too much money.
Right.
That's, that's the hard part for us. We have to have some basis to make that determination whether to deny or remand back to Planning and Zoning Commission to redo it. So for, and this is more for everyone, when you come up here, we, we need to deal with the facts and understanding of what's going on in the area. So just, just so, you know, I'm using, using example to get a message out, so hope you don't mind, but.
No, I understand that. That's, that's what we need.
Maybe they made a mistake.
Completely understand.
Do it this way.
Yeah, I understand.
I understand, you know, your point about it's the money followed. Yes, we understand developers and they come from out of state and it is definitely changing what we've had here for a long time. And so, yeah, it's, it's, it is difficult, but I, it just for, for us to make it a good decision that will stand the test of law, because state law is very clear on how we have to do things that we, we just need real substance here. So if, if you, if that would be very helpful. So, but thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Mr. Mayor, next is Joe Hess.
And we, if we can keep the clap, we don't need to clap. We're all here. We understand. We appreciate what everyone is saying, no matter what they say. Let's just keep respectful and keep the movie, meeting move along, please.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Joe Hess, 3030, 3093 South Gold Bar. I have a degree in geophysics and worked 10 years in a geotechnical environmental engineer, as a geotechnical environmental engineer in the state of Ohio. I want to review some brief facts about the water and the comprehensive plan and the USGS information, and then we'll discuss how this relates to Compass Point. In the Water Master Plan that was created in 2017, and that is to be updated in a five-year plan prior or as conditions dictate, the city's primary concern is radionuclide contaminants and uses numerous engineering strategies to address the elevated levels of uranium in the water. I mentioned this only because I recognize the ongoing extensive engineering and budget resources required by the city to bring us drinking water with all the development that's occurring. In 2016, the USGS, in collaboration with Idaho Department of Water Resources, had been working toward an improved understanding of the Treasure Valley Aquifer System with a groundwater model that was to serve as a tool for water resource management and planning. And that five-year study was to conclude in 2021, so we should have some data either soon or within the next year. How, but how does all this relate to Compass Point? So with residential wells recently going dry at the Five Mile and Amity area in Boise, reported from development that's going on, data suggests that residential groundwater and aquifer systems are being impacted now. Currently, talks on the Five Mile and Amity area are ongoing regarding a class action suit against developers. However, this is Boise, but my point is aquifers are not respective of district boundaries. And there is a report of a well-going bad just east of the Compass Point area. By zoning our 15, this greatly increases water usage and a large budget tied to that usage. Point being, is a small development such as Compass Point worth the effort and risk to push our 15 or be better spent where it is more conforming with less impact to the quality of life of these existing residents? If traffic infrastructure is behind, how do we know that the appropriate research, resources are being allocated to the water delivery, infrastructure, or aquifer system? Since we cannot see it in the subsurface beneath our feet. I want to ensure if council's planning to approve Compass Point to meet an agenda for available land space, that they're working from the most recent available data and have contacted all pertinent valley agencies that this will not tax our current available resources now or in the future. Currently, the city NAPA is considering a pause on future development to review infrastructure in place and what makes sense for their future. Should Meridian consider that same smart planning scenario? And in my opinion, Compass Point is an opportunity to show trust within the community, given all the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, just to, if you don't mind staying for a second, just so I can understand your concern, is your concern specific to the wells, the private wells in this area being depleted? If you could just maybe hone in on your specific concern there?
Okay, my, my concern is that that is just a small portion of what could occur. So when groundwater goes, it goes from the top down. So we don't have the modeling that I know of. At least it's not published from USGS on the groundwater model of the Treasure Valley. But when that groundwater goes, that's a signal. So that's, that's the first step that we need to recognize. And the city already knows historically, the, the deep wells in the area have been pretty stable. But we know the shallow wells are impacted, and we think that they're on the same aquifer system or that smaller aquifer feeds it. Residential are governed by code. They can't go down under 200 feet. We can go down roughly 700 feet with the, the city wells. So that's just a sign of possibly there's some impact. The other thing is we are taxing resources to do this as far as the city water through the blending process, not to be confused with mixing. Filtration, the reverse osmosis, all this is resources, and there's a great budget that we understand goes into that. So this is a small, Compass Point is a small development, but it's part of the picture. And this, my concern goes for all development. Are we considering resources we have now and where are we going in the future?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, and just to, I, last year I was the liaison for the Public Works Department. And just to comment a little bit on that, we sit in a little bit of a basin geologically with our aquifer, and I know that our Public Works Department puts a lot of resources into monitoring our water supply and also not only the supply, but the quality of the water as well, which is something that you touched on. And so I, you know, I, I think that perhaps it might, aside from the Compass Point development, that perhaps you should follow up with city individually, but just to comment that, you know, we take the water supply, both availability and the quality very seriously. And it's not something that is a new issue for us or that the city hasn't, you know, been aware of.
No, I, I don't dispute that at all. I've drank up to six cups of water a day for the last 24 years. And here I am. I'd rather drink that than where I came from in Cleveland. It's safe. I only brought it up to mention that the amount of resources and budget that go into that to get us that good water. Some of the best water in the country are pretty, pretty large.
Thank you. Yes, water is more valuable than gold.
It'll be the currency someday.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And being from Ohio, I can say Lake Erie was on fire quite a few times. So we'll talk about that later. Guy Hogan, yeah. Next is Suzie Link.
If you say your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Suzie Link and I live at 4252 Range Wood in Meridian. I've been here for a couple of years now and I'm still acclimating, so forgive me. I'm here to oppose the Compass Point project as last submitted in March and hope the council will take into consideration the community's arguments made to reduce the density to R8. Even without adjustment, I believe this project will not enhance my neighborhood. I like the open spaces where I live. It means a lot to me. The Cambridge English Dictionary states, high-density building consists of a lot of buildings close together. That is Compass Point. The 33 townhomes are referenced as duplex and triplex style on less than five acres. This triangular piece of property is in a flood area. The applicant has not submitted a land use change application with plans to the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District. But staff stated that the applicant would likely be responsible for a new pump station when I spoke to them on the phone. I confirmed that the property would be part of the district service area. Having said that, the irrigation district with its five cities that it services is unable to keep up with the growth. They have not measured the existing wells in years. The city has not updated its water conservation plan since 2011. And Ada County is abnormally dry in a drought right now. For all these reasons, the development as proposed should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, next is Rhonda Unruh.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor Simson and City Council Members. My name is Rhonda Unruh. I live at 3246 South Merlot Way in Meridian. Again, I would like to respectfully communicate my objection of the proposed R15 rezoning and the current plan of the new Compass Point subdivision. When reading through the comprehensive plan, I've seen that one of the outcome measures under public health and safety is improvement on how well the city is ensuring public safety. I've also read that one of the city's goal statements is to prioritize investment of city and infrastructure and encourage road and school facilities in identified areas to grow responsibly and maximize the delivery of city services. Improvement on how well the city is ensuring public safety and growing responsibly needs to be discussed. Building 37 housing units on a piece of property that is unusually shaped and cannot be fully utilized due to 10-mile creek running through it is not responsible growth. On top of that, this property is situated on an intersection, as we've all talked about, in such a manner that any proposed development cannot plan for more than one exit or entrance for its residents. So has the developer thought about how in the mornings, all these vehicles will be lined up inside on the street as people are trying to navigate a locked gate and then enter traffic on Locust Grove? How does the developer or applicant propose those exiting onto Locust Grove turn left towards the intersection when traffic is backed up in both directions, north and south? This proposal does not offer any improvement of quality of life for any current or future resident plus the daily commuters. Is not demonstrating responsible growth, nor is it ensuring public safety. With Meridian being one of the fastest growing cities in the nation, I believe it is time to push the pause button. Take a deep breath, take a critical, deep look at what we're becoming. It is time for us to reevaluate if we're still working towards our outcome measures and our goals. Are we growing responsibly or just reactively? In other words, can you say that you truly believe that this project is modeling responsible growth, ensuring safety for all the residents in this area and improving quality of life? Are we willing to continue this rate of growth at the expense of losing the dream of being a premier community? Please hear our input, your constituents, and carefully consider what Meridian is becoming. By continuing to approve new subdivisions like Compass Point, we're only adding to the complexities that our citizens must navigate each and every day. I've talked to my neighbors about this situation and there is deep frustration building. Frustration because many have moved here and not to Boise because of our feel, our community and open space. I will, could go on, but I won't. So we're just asking that you listen and that you, we're asking for rezoning, lesser rezoning to an R8. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Dina Weber. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Weber indicates she's representing Cavan Ridge Estates.
Recognize for 10 minutes.
Pardon?
You'll be recognized for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Simson and Councilmen and Women. I appreciate this opportunity to visit with you. Again, my name is Dina Weber and I live at 514 East Claymont Court here in Meridian. And I'm an interim board member of the new HOA that we're developing. And it's located right below Reflection Ridge. I'm here to object to the Compass Point development as it's currently proposed and planned. And I'm not anti-development and I'm not anti-growth. And on the contrary, I don't think we can live in the Treasure Valley actually and be happy and be anti-growth. I've lived here since 1996. In fact, the city planners and government officials and residents should all be responsible to ensure that we have sensible growth that adds value and contributes to a premier community. What we do today will have to live with in 20 years. And it will be our legacy, right? So as our city grows, it is a great opportunity to plan thoughtfully and build our community in ways that are unique and appealing. This includes ensuring a well-thought-out road infrastructure, expanding school system, and just as we just heard, the irrigation water volume through the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District. And I can speak to that. As I lived in Los Alamitos off of Locust Grove for 21 years and moved a mile and a half up the road. And so we have been involved with the Meridian Irrigation, Napa Meridian Irrigation District for that many years, 24 years. And it has been interesting to see how the pressure does go down a lot more than it ever used to. We just had another pressure issue and in fact, all the water stopped for one whole day. So it does happen quite often. I just don't think a lot of people hear it. It, it doesn't last a long time. We just make one call and then it takes care of itself. The neighborhoods surrounding the proposed Compass Point development are well described in the city's comprehensive plan. They're unique yet traditional. They have their own identities, yet they don't distract or detract from one another. They enhance each other and bring value to Meridian. And they contain amenities for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. We ride our bikes all the time, my husband and I, and we go through all the subdivisions. We go through Reflection Ridge, through Tuscany. We come back out through Roaring Springs and we go out, or Thousand Springs, and then we go out through our old subdivision and bound down Overland and through the Meridian Greens and through Observation Point. We ride all through the neighborhoods and we love it. We love being able to see and enjoy all the neighborhoods around us. In contrast, the proposed Compass Point is quite different from any other neighboring areas. It's vertical housing in the midst of horizontal housing. The design appears starkly modern, and I understand that Mr. Arnold is willing to change some of the design stuff. I, I understand that and I appreciate that. But right now it looks very different and the proposal doesn't appear to contain any real shareable amenities. And even if it did, it's a gated community. So the rest of the community around us are locked out of Compass Point, right? So we can't really enjoy riding through and visiting and getting to know our neighborhood and our neighbors. The development contains one entry and exit that is located on a road that is getting more crowded by the week as people use Locust Grove to bypass Eagle Road, right? And it's not because Eagle Road is under construction, not going north or, yeah, north from Victory, right? It's all going on, going south. That's where all the, the construction is going on. It's increasing, the traffic's been increasing for a while and it's likely to continue increasing. When we moved here in 1996, it was two lanes. Seen a lot of development since then, right? So we're not against it, but we just want to see that we're thoughtful in going forward with it. Compass Point may be suitable development and a suitable design along one of the city's more urban corridors. I think that John explained it well, that that kind of development is usually in areas where there is more commercial. There's more, you know, ability to get the, the the bussing and all that other kind of stuff. So it may enhance the city in a different location, but it does not enhance the cities jammed into a highly visible. And I guess I thought I understood that they had lowered the acreage on it, that it was going to be more like three to four acres, and now it's back up to the full seven acres. Am I mistaking that? But anyway, on the corner of Locust Grove, we can accomplish the city's goals of building cross-sections of housing types, but location really does matter. As I said earlier, I've been here since 1996. My husband and I moved here from Eastern Oregon. And I've observed Meridian evolve into a very sought-out area by out-of-state land speculators that purchase plots of land and then hire locals to represent their development to, to our city councils and not just in Meridian, but Boise or any other city. I mean, we see Star, Eagle, all of them growing exponentially. While private business and landlords have a right to invest and profit, as been well stated earlier, right? We understand that. They don't tend to be as committed, since some don't live and work in our community. So they're not as tied to a legacy as we are who live here and retire here, which is what my husband and I are doing. They make their money and they move on. They're not as committed to detail, committed to detail as residents and hopefully our elected representatives. So I asked the council to please object to the application as it's been submitted. I, I just asked that we please uphold, respectfully uphold, the standards and goals of our comprehensive plan so that Meridian is, as the plan describes, a livable, vibrant premier town with distinct, engaging places that are appropriately located and that preserve our historic charm for future generations. And that corner lot, it's nice to have that open. I don't know who owns it exactly. I don't know all the details, but there's a lot of very mature trees there, a lot of habitat there. It's nice to have that open space, especially with so much traffic right there. Maybe a better use of that property might be a park or something. I don't know, but it's just seems so, it would be so much traffic caused by having all those home there's. And the left-hand turn, I don't think they'll ever be able to make, not during traffic hours. Because it's, it's incredibly busy and even with the roundabout, it's going to be a continuous go. And there is no bussing for the high school students that are in that south area. They all have to ride their bikes or they have to ride their, drive their cars. And I personally had a very close friend of mine, if you recall, on Locust Grove, right in front of the LDS church there, there is now a light because my friend's son was hit there and had a traumatic brain injury. And then there was a hit-and-run girl on Locust Grove. And then there was a killing, a, a young boy that was killed on Eagle. Now granted, that was Eagle, but it was a five-lane road. Doesn't matter whose fault it was, there was still a death and one death is too many. So I'm really concerned about the five lanes. I don't know what the plan is, if it's going to go further south from Victory, but I can imagine that it probably will eventually. Five lanes is a lot and it's going to, it's going to just be increasingly. And the other point on the traffic, I've seen this personally through our subdivision, Reflection Ridge. People come through our subdivision through Cavan Ridge to go out onto Victory or they go on that private road that's behind there, or they go out Standing Timber so they can make a left on Victory so they can bypass Locust Grove and Victory. Right? So they do a lot of that. And they also do a lot of trafficking through Tuscany to, to bypass a lot of the need to go through Locust Grove. So I, I really think that the subdivisions in the local area around are starting to really take a hit to the traffic because they're finding other ways to get away from the traffic on Locust Grove and on Victory. So we're having a lot of that happening too. So we've got a lot of traffic more so going through the subdivisions. So anyway, that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, I do.
Councilor Schrader.
Thank you. Just so I can understand and, and from your perspective as a representative of multiple people in the neighborhood. So the surrounding neighborhoods have a density of like 4.4 dwelling units per acre. They can't obviously develop on the creek, right? And that there's the rub. But, you know, this works out to be, if it was that same density as the surrounding neighbors, it would work out to be about 34 units, right? And so I, is the concern really the, the traffic? And do you think that could be alleviated by the timing of this project? Like, would you feel better about it if it happened after the road improvements took place? Or is it the aesthetics and it not blending in with the neighborhood? Or help me really understand the, it doesn't fit kind of comments.
Like I said, I'm not against growth or development. And I think if we can get it, if, if this piece of property is seen fit to be developed, then I would ask that it would be lower density. So the 20-some units would be better because by having less density, you're going to have less people trying to get out on that road. And what happens, you know, when there's, you know, an emergency in that timeframe? And the road is completely, during, during busy hours, there's, it's going to be very hard to get emergency traffic through there. In fact, I had a friend do a drone video just last week on a Thursday between, I think it was like a five o'clock. And it did the drone and, and there was literally traffic lined up on Victory from Locust Grove, almost Eagle was crazy. And then from, from Victory, almost to Standing Timber where Observation Point and where we turn in to go up to Cavan Ridge. And then on Locust Grove, it was incredibly built up. So what's going to end up happening is even if they put a roundabout in there, it's, it, right now it stops traffic with the stoplight, so it makes it even harder. And with the roundabout, it'll keep it going, but it's going to be a continuous going, especially in the mornings and in the evenings, because I worked in Boise for quite a few years and until February of last year and I retired and going to work, there was no way I was going to take the Meridian Freeway exit because there's three lanes, merging traffic onto the freeway. That scared the credit, credit out of me because it was three lanes going into one. So I would refuse to do that. So I would go all the way down Victory, go up Eagle to get onto the freeway there because at least I felt like I was safer getting on one, one time, one at a time instead of three of us trying to get up at the same time. And a lot of other people are starting to see that. They're starting to figure that out. So what are they're all doing? They're all going down to Eagle and getting on the freeway there. And then you get a backup on Eagle in the morning. So it, it's definitely traffic. Part of it is definitely aesthetics and the density, safety issues. And I do know that the Meridian Nampa Irrigation District is starting to see some struggles with them being able to keep up with everything. And, and this is too small to really make that much of a difference. I get that, but it all starts to add up. It all starts to add up. You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor. Councilor Hogg.
Real quick, Nina, one question, because it might be a question for the applicant to, to talk about when he comes back up. And that's, you talked about, you know, riding your bike and whatnot, and it's a gated community and being locked out, but I think, are you concerned about the pathway being something? But I think, are you concerned about the pathway being something that you can't access? Is that the, the concern?
I just think that what's been very fun for us is that from living in Los Alamitos and I've, we, we go, we have friends in Tuscany and we, we ride our bikes and, and we have the ditch banks with, with the, the pathways and stuff. It's been really fun to interact with our neighbors and our neighboring neighborhoods to be able to ride bikes through there and, and just enjoy ourselves. And when you have that triangle piece, it's, they're just going to be cut off from the world, so to speak. Because there isn't any way to really get in there or do anything and share their, their little area with everybody else as well.
Thank you. We'll check.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
You.
Mr. Mayor, next is Dwight Pond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Dwight Pond. I live at twenty-six ninety-nine South Bayou Bar Way. I am impressed with this crowd behind me. They came way more prepared than I did. The only thing I bring to you is nothing new. I was aware that we've been through incredible growth spurt in the last ten years. And I was Googling this morning and turns out Meridian is about seven percent growth over the last ten years. And we've had bigger numbers than Boise. The only percentage one that was higher was Star. And I got to thinking about that and I was thinking about our Locust Grove expansion because we live off time zone right where the traffic light is getting ready to go in. And so we weren't super keen on the expansion anyway because it would just mean for us more noise, more traffic, just, you know, more stuff. But at least with the traffic light, people can at least make access in a Locust Grove. And so we thought that would, that would be a benefit. But then when I heard about the project and I just learned about it in the last couple of days, my biggest concern is when Locust Grove is already a problem that you're addressing or ACHD is addressing with expansion. I don't understand why we'd be even considering adding a higher density to put even more flow into a problem that we already recognize exists. And that was why I decided I would at least come here tonight and express my opinion. It's like when you have a problem, I'm in business, I work at a hospital here. We don't typically make the problem worse by just simply adding more to it. And so I would hope that we could maybe come to a better compromise with the developer. I'm certainly in favor of smart growth. And I don't think the Treasure Valley is slowing down anytime soon. But it just doesn't make sense to me to put even more pressure on an artery that seems like it's already jacked up as it is. And so I would respectfully request that the project as planned be adjusted at least to a smaller footprint. And maybe we could find a common ground with the development organization. But Locust Grove, in my opinion, is not going to be a, well-suited to take on additional, additional traffic. Thank you for your time.
Council, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Chris Groll. G R O L L. Okay. He did sign up, so we'll go to Jared Smith. Sarah, Jared Smith. Okay, then next we have, oh, Jared is online, one more. Jared, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Awesome. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I, I'm here tonight because I recently received multiple flyers containing very frightening reasons to oppose this rezoning. One thing that's interesting to me about this flyer was Mr. Buckner's phone number at the bottom, listed with the area code five six two. I thought it was really interesting because that's also my area code. And if you're unaware, it's an area code for Orange and Los Angeles Counties in Southern California. Yeah, I'm one of those dang Californians, just like the California Realtor being derided tonight and exactly like Mr. Buckner himself. Since moving to Idaho from California, I've had plenty of people say things like, welcome, we're glad you're here, but remember why you left. I've also heard some less kind versions of that as well. I personally though, think it's valuable to, to discuss why I left because I think it's relevant tonight, to this hearing tonight. I personally love California because my now wife and I were concerned about being able to afford a home. As a young couple, our combined salaries would leave us unable to get a leg up and prepare for our futures. And the high house prices in Southern California left my parents unable to retire anytime soon. And after working in the state legislature on housing issues, it became clear to me that housing in California is so expensive because it is so dang hard to build, mainly due to the efforts of existing residents trying to stifle development in favor of things like quote smarter or quote more reasonable growth. And things were never going to change. And so we moved. And, uh, you know, don't get me wrong, I love my neighborhood and I think my neighbors are some of the most kind, generous and caring people I've met. But I think the approach is misguided. I remember why I left California. And I'm frustrated to see the same conditions here that made me unable to start a life in my hometown. In my experience, the common refrains when people are concerned about this type of housing is the traffic will spike, the, the design clashes with existing buildings. Housing prices will decrease of, of our existing homes. And, and you know, to the first, I have to say that the ACHD study and the, you know, the numbers provided by staff, it doesn't show a significant terrifying growth that, you know, is, that's reflected in the flyer that was passed to me. And to the second, anyone about, you know, designing clashing, anyone who walks from Tuscany to my subdivision in Bellingham Park or, you know, further down to Wells, will see that there are different designs ingrained in each of these communities. And they change from community to community. And that's not a bad thing. It adds character and it adds flavor to our communities. I think we all though ought to be less concerned about the character of our homes and more concerned about the character of their inhabitants. What does it say about a developer who has worked tirelessly to accommodate concerns offered to completely change the designs of his homes and reduce the number of lots, only to face the same unchanged opposition as before? Just as some are opposing this, uh, this development based on, you know, a concern about traffic and differing design standards. I know that someone just opposed my home on the same grounds when it was built in twenty-eleven. I know that beneath plenty of these arguments lie the reality that many are concerned about the value of our homes where much of our net worth is stored. Uh, but what worries me more is the fact that one day, my son or daughter will be in the same position that I was in and will be unable to afford a starter home in the place they were born and raised. Lastly, you know, I echo Mr. Buckner's view that people are moving to our great state and to our city because they want freedom. But what then does it say about the efforts of a president of a neighboring HOA to use the city as a cudgel to limit the ability of others to build and live in our great city, even after the commission and staff have approved it? I don't mean to cast aspersions, but this inconsistency is glaring and at times frustrating to me. Mr. Buckner is right when he says your actions today will impact our future of our community. And I hope that the impact they have is one of fostering a welcome community and not one where we climb the ladder before hoisting it up behind us. Because of this, because my respect for my neighbor's concerns is outweighed by a greater concern for my children's future, my future children's future, if that. I respectfully request you approve this application. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Or, you know, I know you guys have limited, limited time, so feel free to move on to the next.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And unfortunately, I've got to ask you, much to the maybe the chagrin of the people in this thing, for your address. Hopefully no one's going to come by your homeowner, but.
You know, I'm always happy to have these conversations. I'm actually neighbors with Ms. Link. I am at four two five nine Rancho Way. At Bellingham Park, yeah.
Council, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Annette Alonso with the Southern Rim Coalition. Nat, you can unmute yourself.
Good eve- good evening, everybody. This is Annette Alonso at twenty-two oh four East Hyper Drive in Meridian. And I'm representing the Southern Rim Coalition. I've kind of, I'm very neutral on this development. You know, I just, I, I think part of what's aggravating people is there, you know, let's move to Idaho, but let's shut the door kind of a thing. And, and that's not realistic. You know, we've all come from somewhere else at some point. And, and I think our, our community is growing. It's growing very rapidly. You know, we've approved our fifteen south down on on Lake Hazel off of Eagle Road. So I think, I think saying our fifteen should be, you know, it says that it should be by commercial and, and housing and things like that. But in reality, that's going to come eventually. And in this area especially, it's going to come. So, uh, you know, the only, the, the only thing I might have a problem with on this is you know, the R fifteen zoning and an R eight. And, and that worries me only because if this development, they end up not doing this development and they end up selling it to somebody, then we have an R fifteen. Granted, so they'd have to come back to the city council and planning and zoning and do some things again. But that's my, really my only concern is we're changing the flume right after we've done it again and we said we're not going to do that. So, you know, the road thing, if the road thing is the road thing, I, I think the roundabout will take a huge pressure off of this intersection. I mean, I go through this intersection all the time. I live in this area. As you know, I've been pretty much involved with every development that's happened in this area. And, and when it's an infill, you know, the Southern Rim trying to sit back and go, you know, infill needs to happen. We need to infill. It's the far-reaching stuff that's more of a concern to us. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Annette. Council, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next, I, I'm not good at reading the writing, but I believe it's Kent Gale. Great.
Mayor, Councilman, my name's Kent Gale. I live at forty-six eighty. I'm sorry. Yeah, my name's Kent Gale. I live at forty-six eighty South High Cliff Avenue. I'm opposing this development due to the fact that the city Meridian is growing extremely rapidly, as everybody here is aware of. However, the road systems here have not been keeping up this pace with the population growth. The traffic circle of Victory and Locust Grove may be great for that portion of the intersection. But the entire length of Locust Grove from Overland all the way down to Amity is a two-lane road. Lot of traffic, no turn lanes. I ride a motorcycle every day to work. I've been hit almost three or four times on that road to begin with because people get impatient with the traffic flow and they'll just try to dart out in front of anybody and everybody. Adding higher traffic density to that road is very concerning to me. And like we said earlier today, ACHD is not planning on doing Locust Grove until maybe next year. But they're already talking about building the, starting the construction at the end of this year. What happens if a project gets delayed on Locust Grove till a later date? We've just added more traffic to congested area already. That just does not make sense for the citizens who live in that area and try to use Locust or Victory as an alternate route. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Council, Mr. Schrader.
I, thank you. Yeah, I understand the, the traffic concern, but I guess really what we come to is it, it's that question of, are you going to kind of pull up the ladder behind you? I, I get there's the infrastructure concern, but do you think that the city of Meridian should stop all development? I mean, why this development particularly? It's thirty-seven units. Help me understand. I mean, do you think we should just stop growing for a period of time? What, what's your view on that?
Personally, ma'am, I think that the city needs to stop all growth until the road systems are upgraded to accommodate the growth rate that's going on in the city. I mean, because without the road system and the infrastructure, then where are we going?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Mike Bierman.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm a retired educator and I want to compliment you guys on your focus seeking to understand where everyone's coming from. You have a tough decision. I'm not anti-growth, although I do like open areas. I've lived in this area all my life, where I used to hunt pheasants. Not even close to what I can do now. But my main concern with this project is the one entrance and one exit on Locust Grove. And until, I mean, if it were me, until I had an understanding of how that's going to work, I would be a little concerned and I, I drive and ride my bike in that area. And if I've lived in this new development and I came out on Locust Grove, I would not try to turn left. I would have to turn right, be my only shot. And then I'm worried that they're going to take another ride into Tuscany Village, which, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you where I live. But I live in Tuscany Village. And that is a road, on roads that just have parking on both sides, lots of children. So that's a real concern of mine. It's a safety issue. And I would just hope that you can look into that concern. If that can be answered, then, then great. But if it can't, it's a safety thing for me because there are a lot of kids in that subdivision. There always will be. That's the type of subdivision it is. And if people are going to come through there and then turn left on Victory to get to that Meridian, it would just concern me a great deal. Have any questions?
Mike, if we can see, say your address. I know you told us what subdivision.
Four East Pienza Street in Meridian.
Thank you. Okay. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, just to comment.
Councilman, sorry. Councilman.
It's a compliment, actually. Hey, uh, I, I feel for you in regard to the hunting, you know, I would, I'm not going to lie. If, if I could walk out my back door and county property and shoot a couple of pheasants in the morning, I, I, I think I'd go for that ten out of ten times.
I'm no, I'm, I'm not expecting that, by the way.
I know, I, I know you're not, but what I'm saying is I miss, I, I miss those, those times as well.
Okay. Thank you. And you have a tough decision. Appreciate your time.
If I could ask a question, maybe to Joe or Bill, or do we have ACHD? Is Christie on the line this evening?
Mr. Mayor, she's not.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, was it ever explored? I know we have an emergency access off of Victory. Because with the roundabout, one of the nice thing, I, I can't say something nice about roundabout. Anyone ready? One of the nice things with about the roundabout, if you had a right out onto Victory, it would allow for easier left-hand turn movements at the, at the roundabout. ACHD is already diverting from their policy for one. Did we choose the wrong one to divert for their policy for a left-hand turn movement? Or is the other one already in the roundabout so close that it's not plausible? Just out of curiosity, if that was ever explored.
Mr. Mayor, the, those conversations that I know of or not had, specifically, the best I can say is that from the beginning, ACHD was adamant about these being, the Locust Grove access being the only access and the subdivision having private streets. That's the, unfortunately, the furthest the conversations went because they were pretty much at a hard stop.
Mr. Quirk, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is Chris Paul.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Paul and I'm at thirty-eight twenty-three South Como Avenue. I know a lot of these points have been touched, so I'm going to try and hit the ones that haven't been touched. So, uh, in response to Jared, he mentioned, you know, his kid's future. I guess he didn't read that Mountain View High School with the report is a hundred and nine percent to capacity. Victory Middle School is a hundred and five percent to capacity and Hilldale Elementary School is a hundred and thirty-two percent to capacity. So Jared sounds like a young guy like myself and it is a concern of mine that the nearest schools are already over capacity and I do have concern about education, putting more homes in there. Another thing I'll mention is no parking in the gated community. When you're not able to park in those areas, I am curious what's going to happen on holiday weekends. You know, if people are having parties and events, they can't go park in their neighbor's driveway. Are they going to be parking in our communities and walking over to the, to the gated area or to the gated community? So that's a real concern of mine with parking. And then also, I know traffic's been touched a lot, but I noticed that the traffic widening, and maybe someone can clarify it for me, is that the widening in the roundabout only goes up to a certain point. And it almost looks like the, where the one exit is, that is not widened. It might be in the future. I, I, I just was a little bit confused on that. And also, I truly believe that the traffic, the, the current issue, we're solving for the current issue, not the future with, with this roundabout. We also have a lot of communities or subdivisions going in on Locust Grove, south of Amity. So those homes are also going to continue to cause traffic. And I'd also had another question, was the report done with ACHD in regard to those commute subdivisions that already have been approved? And how about the forty-one homes that are going in across the street? And then lastly, from a safety issue, I know that there is that access point from Victory. That's an emergency access point. And then lastly, from a safety issue, I know that there is that access point from Victory. That's an emergency access point. But still, I know he's I know it was mentioned that it's only one point five cars a minute. But really, it's in a twenty four hour period when you take that out, when people are sleeping, it's everyone's going in and out at the same time. So what if there's a fire truck that's trying to come in even through the emergency access point? Where are then there's cars lined up? Are they even going to be able to get to the emergency in that situation? And lastly, I know it was mentioned, four point four point eight homes per acre or in terms of density. I know that technically it's near. Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say technically it's near that and other communities, but really you can't build on the on Ten Mile Creek, so it's really much higher. And I would like everyone to just consider that.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last of those that indicated positively they wish to testify.
Is there any bails in the audience would like to provide testimony on this item? If so, you're welcome to come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record. We recognize for three minutes. Or if you're online and would like to write, provide testimony, please use the raise your hand function and we will work you in appropriately. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I didn't come prepared either. I just found out about. But I just have a couple of questions.
You set your name and address for the record.
Doris Allen, and I'm at twenty six twenty four South Engelnuck Place. So I'm off of Locust Grove. Have a hard time, have had a hard time getting on. And I don't think that the roundabout is going to fix it because I wait for the traffic light to stop traffic so I can get on. So and I've been at at roundabouts before, but the roundabout is going to just keep on letting traffic keep coming on the busy at the busy times and it's not going to stop traffic so that I can get out there. Especially when school's on and people are going to work. Because when I was working, I could not get to Overland. And once I got to Overland, I couldn't get to Eagle to get on the freeway to go to work. So if you were a few minutes late off your time schedule, you were a half hour late or more, forty five minutes late getting downtown. And that was two thousand twelve. So now combine that, I don't do an eight o'clock or a seven forty five or even a seven o'clock meeting now. So but I recently had a leak at my house, found out that the PSI inside my house was a hundred. And Meridian Water came over and said that is what all the houses was a hundred. I had to put a pressure valve, pressure reducing valve in my house to reduce the water pressure in my house so that it didn't blow out all my plumbing. So if we continue to put more projects, more housing developments out to have to increase the water pressure to get water to those developments, what does that do to the existing developments that we already have? And when you talk about NAP irrigation, I have had to put in a new a new pump or not a pump, but a an irrigation site with a filter with a triple sized filter because it turns my water system off. I can't leave a day without having to clean that filter. So I don't know, and I've had NAP irrigation down there. They don't, my, the person putting it in says so much dirt and everything is coming through there, it would clog up my my drip lines. There's so schools.
If you can.
Who's going to pay for the schools, who's going to pay for the sewer, who's going to pay for the roads, who's going to pay for all the infrastructure that we don't have in place to put these in? Where that, the only thing I would say where that compass is at is is a bad it's a bad location where the structure is. We talk about one, one car, it's a two car garage. And then if they have friends, they must be going to have like a parking structure for those friends to go and park at. So you're going to have a lot of parking.
Thank you, Doris. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Debbie Lambert and I live at three six nine eight South Arno. I I would reiterate a lot of things, but I won't waste the time. I think one thing that we haven't talked about is the wildlife in the area. I'm very much a bird watcher. I'm a lover of birds of prey and all those trees that they're cutting down on both of those corners house a ton of birds. I count birds for the Bird Society. We've seen a decline in the kestrels. We have a lot of hawks in the area, a lot of birds of prey hawks. They're losing their homes. One of the questions I would ask is what is the plan for the trees along Ten Mile Creek there at the back of that subdivision that's going in? I do oppose the subdivision at the rating it is being asked to be put in at. I would ask that it be declined for all the reasons that other people have brought up. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, counsel. Is there anybody else would like to provide testimony on this item?
My name is James Lambert, live at thirty six ninety eight South Arno in Meridian. And I really basically have a comment, even though I I totally oppose this project. I bring up the fact that it's corner near Overland and and Meridian Road, there's a Dutch Brothers Coffee located there. And I know Luke's been on next door neighbors that are often about the problems that's generated there and people are scratching their heads on what to do to correct that traffic issue there. And I think that's the exact same issue we're looking at with the left hand turns coming out of this subdivision. If we approve it is what are we going to do down the road? Because it's going to be a problem. Like the gentleman said, it's either going to go through his neighborhood or something, but we need to do that now. Don't scratch our heads like we are for the Dutch Brother issue. That's all I have.
The good news is there is a solution coming for the Dutch Bros. But soon. So ITD and ACHD are working together on a white for that intersection. Is there anybody else would like to provide testimony? It's like we got a couple marks.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Aaron R. Toledo and I am at four four three two three Rangewood Way. So hopefully I don't come across too too crass. I try to refine it in my head. First of all, not sure if you guys have been on these rows lately, but there's a reason why I was late today. Now that with the whole COVID thing getting done over and done with, we forget that a lot of these folks were tele teleworking, right? So you're just seeing and I mean, everyone's here seeing it. We've seen these these lines that that are ridiculous. And you know, for all the reasons that we've mentioned, right? The the traffic, the gentleman with the with the degree in geophysics, they talked about the aquifer system, you know, all these reasons. We could go in circles all day, but I think what it boils down to is, you know, we got to ask ourselves like, what is the function of government, right, at all levels? To to further the will of the people and just judging by how many folks are in favor of this, we have what that one gentleman Jared so far. One lady was neutral after him, so that doesn't really count. That kind of equalizes. And then all of us that have, you know, come to show up. I think it speaks for itself that we do not wish for this proposal to continue as planned. You know, I'm I'm very pro business. I'm, you know, I'm not anti-business, I'm not anti-growth even. But as everyone has reiterated here, smart growth, maybe we can revisit this and just alter it somehow. I mean, I just I would say, why complicate this issue? You know, my son loves math. If I could ask him, hey, there's one person that spoke in favor, one person neutral and all these numbers, which one do you think you should listen to? I think I think he would come up with the answer. So let's just keep it simple, I ask, and and please consider voting in opposition of this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schrader.
Not a question, but just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Artrego. I I think it's important to keep in mind that when we're making land use decisions, we're in a state with very high emphasis on private property rights. And so to Councilman Hoagland's point earlier, when we make land use decisions, we're we're not making it by taking a poll of the room of how many people are in favor or how many people are against. We can make lawful decisions about what's in the city's best interest. We can take into account comments about the traffic, about whether this fits for the the zoning or for our future land use map, but certainly it's not a popularity contest. And I I just want to make that comment. That's just not how how this can work.
Understood, but I mean, the traffic already is bad, so it doesn't make any sense to make it worse.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions? Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, thanks for your time. My name is Walter Paul. I live at five sixty three East Piece of Drive. And that's in Cave and Ridge. I just wanted to share some thoughts with you, maybe beyond this development. I've had spent most of my life in New York and fourteen years in the state of California. I've seen growth beyond all of this completely, explosive growth. And the one thing that government has struggled with, you know, through everything that I've witnessed is they do not keep infrastructure up with the development or the growth of people and housing. And I know this is a tough decision for you, but when what I find is that sometimes we have roads at a twenty, thirty, forty years old and we have an influx of people, tremendous amount. When we look at Locust Grove, it certainly is not from Overland South. It's not capable of handling what we have today. We continue to see developments going in. It's just going to continue with the problem. Water was a problem in California where I came from, they continued to build and they just told people to keep using less. So what you're doing is government is putting pressure on people to do less with it will have lesser quality of life. You can't use water. You can't drive on your streets. Should I go to the lake today because I may not have, you know, because traffic is bad? I would second guess going to a beach in California because of the traffic. So it does dictate and it does really ruin the quality of life. So going forward, my just my my thoughts that I'm sharing with you tonight is just, you know, this is beyond just this development because I think we're starting to see the stresses and strains of this. And again, this is bigger than just this development going in over here.
Any questions? Thank you, Walter. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilman Hoagland.
Just maybe a comment. I think there's a question here. We'll see, Walter. You know, you you raise a good point, you know, that that infrastructure doesn't keep up. And just like our schools, we had a good meeting with the school board here a couple of weeks ago and found yeah, they don't start building schools if they're below capacity. They wait till they're at capacity and above before they build the next school. And it's unfortunately, our tax structure for our road system is kind of the same way. Impact fees are paid by developers who come in and we get impact fees for police, fire, parks in and eighty county highway district. So you need those fees, you know, we we want growth to pay for itself. But unfortunately, we have to have that growth for then the money to be there. Now, a couple of years ago, ACHD tried to raise registration fees on vehicles and the voters turned it down. So that means there's not more money for road. We haven't had a gas tax increase, which is a state legislator thing for many, many, many years. And so and the cost of maintaining roads goes up. So I I guess if if we have a solution to have funding to do that in advance, I'd love love to hear it because it is difficult.
If I have one comment to that, I would say sometimes in life, and I know most governments struggle with this, sometimes you have to take a pause. Sometimes you have to step back and say, we need to pause. Where are we at? What's it doing to our our environment, our community, our roads? And are we now ready to continue on? Or do we have to take a pause now and then see where we're at and then step and go forward at that point in time? So I think everything is always a rush. And that's what I've seen in all these other places on business. I traveled a lot. I've been to Seattle. I've been to Portland. So all the mistakes that I'm seeing in those places, as well as where I grew up and as well as the fourteen years I spent in California, I'm seeing now you're faced with those same problems and those same issues. And a lot of times they just don't stop and take a pause. And then that's why everybody is running here, but we're running out of places to run to. Because, you know, basically, you know, we're we're going to become them. And then it's going to be what's the next big, you know, big city or state to go to. So just some observations for your your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, if I might follow up. And those are good observations. Walter, I appreciate that. And and it's also involvement for you and others in this room to be involved in in the legislative elections because some of the tools they give us is to widen Eagle Road. The village was going to pay for that widening and that's how we go road got wide. Chindon Road needed to be widened twenty years ago. And to do that, you have to approve development like a Costco, so then they will pay for the road improvement and widening of it. And then the state allows them to collect the revenue back over a period of time. It's called Stars Program. And then collect the small amount to repay them to widen that road. So I find it ironic that we have to approve development to get the roads wide. It's just.
And I did hear that about Costco and Chindon, which was was tremendous. And I think because this is becoming more of a destination point and it's growing, I think you can lean on these businesses that want to be here and make money. You know, for the long haul to help maybe all of us in terms of we shouldn't be bearing all the costs of this. They need to be sharing in it with us, you know, but they want to share in the profits from us. We they can share in some of the costs.
Yeah. And and Mr. Mayor, to your point, Walter, that's a great point. And I think in this case, the developer is is giving ACHD land or I don't know what the arrangement is, but we require that of developers all the time. They have to provide those easements for future widening. If they want to develop, you're going to have to contribute. And we do have some really good developers who provide school sites and whatnot. So yes, to your point, you're you're absolutely right that they have to have skin in the game and and most of them do. So I appreciate you speaking tonight in the dialogue. Hopefully, hopefully it was educational to everybody.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, I I really appreciate the comments that have been made in regard to smart growth. I couldn't agree more and I won't, I won't get into it too much, but there's been a couple of comments that have been made in regard to taking a pause and just stepping back and and watching and analyzing. And and I'm not I don't necessarily think that that is viable option as well. I I travel, we all travel on the same roads you guys do. You know, we we are I I I live near here as this 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 development and I I I do a lot of business in a in a in a development that's nearby, so I'm always on this. I totally get it. We all get it. The economic consequences of putting a pause on growth would be catastrophic. Would be absolutely catastrophic. And I think that sometimes as a community, we have short term memory loss when it comes to this because I was involved in the Great Recession that hit our country twelve years ago. And the amount of people who lost their jobs because growth stopped. Now, I get that wasn't local government that made that choice. It was it was because of different circumstances for sure. But and and I'm not saying that I I I I empathize with you. I we all do. But I'm not sure that a pause right now would be the answer. Smart growth for sure. And I really appreciate the comments that have been made and brought up with regard to to smart growth. I really appreciate it. But pause, I I I think that would be enormously catastrophic toward our community.
Now, Councilmember, we did take a brief pause as we were waiting for the legislature, but the word I've heard people use is moratorium, which has, and that's the city's official way to do things, but there are sideboards that limit that only for a brief period of time. So but again, I think going back to the point of understanding the the state law and getting involved with your legislators is how you can help us address issues perhaps in the future. With that, we are still open for public testimony on this item. So if you've not yet testified, yes, ma'am, come on up. You say your name and address for the record. Either one.
Thank you. My name is Linda Alexander. And I live at sixteen fifty Susan Drive, which is south of Amity on the rim. I came here twenty-six years ago from Montana, and we chose to come here. We had options for when my husband was going to be transferred. We had options to stay in Montana or come here. We came here because we were whitewater rafters and skiers, and so this area appealed to us for our kids. They were in high school at the time, and Idaho's awesome. It offers, has so much to offer, all of us. My concern about this growth is, and I'm not opposed to growth by any means. I, my, my parents were in the Air Force. I moved all my life. I can't, this is my home because I've lived here the longest. But, and I've experienced a lot of growth in various places that I've lived. I'm opposed to this growth, because it's too much. I know that he did calculations and says it's not high density, but it is considering the surrounding areas. I actually think it should be R four. And I do admit, I had a mistake. I thought this lot was the one north of there with the, that was backing up to Cabela. I did not realize it was the small little, and it's small. I mean, oh, it's six acres. But if it were R four, that would be twenty-four homes. And they're talking thirty-seven lots. How many people, how many families are going to be with, you're talking triplex? Oh, no. Yeah, triplex and duplex. That's a lot of families in that tiny, and that's rather small. I live on an acre, and so it's, it's still looks small to me. For thirty-seven lots with triplexes and duplexes, that's way too many people in a small area. That's only going to have two entrances, and it's with a private gated area. It's just too much impact. We already have. And someone mentioned, the earlier man mentioned all the housing that's approved and going in already. It's being built. They're putting in the sewers south of, of Locust Grove. And how many homes are going to be there? You guys approved it. I do not know. Many, many, and that's, they're not going to travel south for their commuting. They're going to go north and make the roads worse. When we moved here twenty-six years ago, we were told that Locust Grove was going to be three lanes within five years. It's still two lanes, and it's still the quality of a farm road, as is Locust Grove to the south. And so I think it should be actually changed to R four and go with the growth, but reduce the number of houses per lot. It's just per acre. Just absurd what's going on here with, with the roads especially. It took me fifty minutes, fifty minutes to get from the West Y down to south of Amity today because of the traffic. And I don't normally drive at that time, but I was able to work out. You have to sign up, and so it was the only time available for me to work out. I was called at that. So please consider changing it to R four, not R eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for what you do.
Any questions? Appreciate it. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this application?
My name is Linda Hess. I live at three zero nine three South Gold Bar in Sherbrooke Hollows. It's about a quarter of a mile east of the proposed development. I won't repeat a lot of what you've heard tonight. One thing I will say and add on to what has been said is that I was at the last hearing. My husband and I have looked at all the plat maps. I have worked for developers. I've worked for builders. I've lived in the state of California and the Bay Area for ten years and came back. I was born and raised there. And so I have been a witness to all the growth. I've gone outside of the state. I've seen the growth. And what happens on the other side of the scene, okay? I, there is a lot of work, and there's a lot of money and time invested in putting together these developments and master plan communities. I, I get that. I know what it's all about, and I know that you guys have your jobs to do. I think what I would like to say is that I would like to see a balance of what is going to happen on this property. I would like to see the density reduced. I am a mom. I am a grandma. I am a wife. I am a lot of different things every day. And my daughter could not afford to live in this community as it is. And my daughter probably will not be able to afford to live in that community, even if it is reduced. If I was able to live in this community and I was babysitting my grandma, I would be scared to drive out on, out of that roundabout onto Locust Grove. I understand why ACHD is requiring it to be private. I understand why that roundabout, that round entrance in and out onto Locust Grove. That is a huge concern for me. So the density, the housing within that property, I'd like to see it reduced because it is a safety issue. And I understand that Locust Grove is going to be expanded, and that roundabout is going to include continuous traffic. That is not going to, that is not going to reduce the safety there, because if you're trying to pull out of that subdivision onto Locust Grove, even if we put off building this subdivision after the construction has been done, it is still going to be, and it's just a safety issue because the amount of people and the way you have to pull out. That traffic is going to be continuing. That traffic, there's not going to be a stoplight. So I think from my perspective, living in that community, I walk my dogs in the community. I birdwatch in the community. I don't pheasant hunt. But, but I, I don't. But, you know, again, just being part of the community and a concerned citizen, I would like to live there with my granddaughter and pull out and feel like I was safe. And all the other kids that are coming back and forth from Mountain View, all the nearby schools. I guess what I'm saying, please consider reducing the amount of residences.
Thank you. Councilmember. Linda.
Yep. There's one question. I, there's been a lot of comments tonight in regard to affordability, and it's a really interesting topic. And trying to wrap my arms around that, can you walk me through how you think us denying this project would, is going to make affordability with housing going forward?
I am not requesting or suggesting to deny the project. What I am, I think that we should reduce the number of housing units that we are putting on this property. I am not anti-growth. Again, I worked on the development side. I've worked for the best home builders in the country when I lived down in California. I know what goes on behind the scenes. I know what happens when you have to approach city councils for approval of your master plans and your developments. So I am not saying to put this project off, cancel the project. I'm just saying, let's wait until this, let's, let's wait a little bit until this Locust Grove is complete, and maybe do a little bit of more investigation or future studies on it.
Mr. Mayor's follow-up.
Councilmember.
So if, 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 just hypothetically, if we were to approve this, this project at a lower density, do you believe that that would affect affordability?
I don't know at this time. I don't think anybody can say what's going to happen. We don't know what's going to happen next week. Again, you know, you know, I would like my daughter and my family. I'd like, you know, yeah, could I afford to live in there? I don't know that.
I get it. I was, interesting, you're not the first person that's mentioned that tonight, and I just wanted to.
Oh, you know, and I haven't really talked to anybody else about that affordability. But again, you know, coming from the, living in the community, being a grandma, working on the development side. And again, I appreciate all the money that the developer has put into the project. I'm just saying from the other side of things, and sometimes we have to step back and put ourselves in your shoes, our shoes and theirs, and what is the best for all of us combined, and that's definitely finding a balance.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Helen Serati. I live at three four four zero South Merlot Way. Excuse me, it's allergies, I believe. And I've lived there for two, since two thousand and five, when the houses were new. And I've watched, you know, the cattle, the sheep, the birds, the trees, you know, all disappear. So my backyard faces the development, faces Locust Grove. And I have a new tenant. My niece lives with me now. And she has noticed, and she's been there, all the traffic accidents in the, on Locust Grove, near the, near the intersection. And so my main, and I have grandchildren who go to Mountain View High School, but they're almost through it. They're almost graduated, but they've had trouble getting to school too. So I know the high density of the area. I mean, it's concerning. But, so my concern mainly is, I don't know, losing the natural habitat and the peace and, you know, all the traffic that's been added and all that. It's like, but it's still a beautiful place. I still have, I mean, they didn't cut down all the trees, but I, I was, I, there's been a lot of trees cut down recently. And I guess I'm getting nervous. Excuse me. So where was I going with this? So I've seen a lot of change, and I was hoping that that land would eventually be parkland, because, you know, in, but, you know, that's what way back when people talked about. Oh, they'll never turn it into, you know, because of the odd shape and the triangle and triangles and in the location and everything. But, so it was disheartening to find out, you know, fifty-eight units were planned. I went to the first meeting on that site and talked about the trees coming down and all that. And, and now it's, it's, you know, good to hear that those, it's been reduced to thirty-seven. But still, you know, it's a natural, it's like a natural creek in there. So, you know, it is a natural creek, and it's beautiful. There's irises growing. And I'm, I'm concerned about how they're going to alter that too as well. But I guess my main concern is safety, the traffic. I'm retired now. I don't go. When I went out the other day, there was, am I done talking?
If you can, if you can finish your thought.
Okay, when I went out the other day, there was, I'd never seen it that way before, from the intersection of Locust Grove to Eagle, all line, all line of cars. And now, and then hearing testimony, they're saying it goes on and on the other way. So, you know, I mean, adding more traffic in there, and those left turn, right turns, those issues in rerouting traffic. I mean, I'm like, I don't even go out in those hours, but I know what they're talking about. And my street is, has a lot of children on it. So the rerouting through my street, my areas, my community is a concern. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item?
Hi, my name is Emily Primmers. I live at twenty-two thirty East Horse Creek Port, already in Idaho. Public speaking is not my thing, so as I stumble through this, please bear with me. I did, I know that everybody's made a lot of these points, and I don't want to be redundant, so I'm going to try to be quick, and I talk fast anyways. So if I'm talking too fast, please tell me, and I'll try to slow down. I did want to say, just in general, not specific to this intersection, I understand that our infrastructure is just not keeping up with the growth. And I, I understand that pausing is not a viable option. It would have very bad consequences on the area. And I understand that, but I think smart growth, like you said earlier, is definitely the way to go. And I don't feel that this high-density development in this area is smart growth. I'm sorry, I have a couple of points. Locust Grove, I know a lot of people have talked about traffic and the issues, but I want to throw some numbers at you really quick that I actually got from the agency responses that were out on the website. So the acceptable level of service for a two-lane minor arterial is E or five hundred and seventy-five vehicles per hour, BPH for short. The ACHD rating for Locust Grove right now, not including all the growth that's going on south, it's already been approved and all that jazz. Right now, it's F at six hundred and seventy-six VPH. Victory is also an F at six hundred and fifty-one VPH. And I think it's really important to consider the timing of these ACHD improvements that are happening to the road. You know, I've seen them get it delayed a couple of times. We're talking about end of the year here for this development. What happens come February, when these, these improvements to the road are still out, you know, a year or two years? We just can't sustain this amount of traffic, and I think everybody here would agree with me. I think we've all sung the traffic song. I'd also like to point out, and I know somebody mentioned this again, and I apologize, the area schools are already at max capacity. I'm going to stop hitting that. The area schools are already at max capacity. What I haven't heard anybody mention is the fire station. And MPD's response was that this development is closest to station number four, which the current reliability is only seventy-seven percent, and the targeted goal is eight. So we're already under what we want to be performing for the fire station, and I haven't heard anybody talk about. And then again, I just want to reiterate, the high-density housing, it doesn't align with the zoning of the surrounding area, which are RUT, R four, and R eight. So I am obviously opposed to this, and I would request it's R eight or lower. And I also just want to, on a personal note, I just kind of want to make the point that I feel like every time I hear about Idaho, it really prides itself on recreation. You know, we promote outdoors and the beautiful, you know, all this thing, and we say, explore Idaho. And overcrowded high-density housing does not align with that image. It destroys it. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Question, just a comment. Emily, I know public speaking isn't always everybody's favorite thing to do, but I thought you did a great job of presenting your facts. You, I think it's, Mr. Mayor, can we let everyone give a quick round of applause? You did a great job. Thanks.
Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item?
My name is Richard Crandall. I live at thirteen nineteen East Observation Street. That's in the Cabela Creek subdivision, which is like about a hundred yards west of Locust Grove on Victory, right across from Tuscany, so it's pretty close to the intersection. So I, my work is only like five minutes away from me on a good day. But trying to get out, I actually take Lake Creek, which is about hun, couple hundred yards north of the intersection on Locust Grove to turn out onto Locust Grove and get there. So if there's no traffic, it takes me like four minutes to get to work lately in the morning. It's like seven thirty, seven thirty-five. Takes me like fifteen to twenty minutes. So that just, and all that time is pretty much spent trying to turn out onto Locust Grove. And I see the line just going all the way back to the intersection. That's just a personal story. I know we've all talked about traffic and stuff. But another thing is just a note, as far as the density, I think Cabela Creek seems to be pretty, a pretty average neighborhood in the area. I mean, at least from what I've noticed. And I don't know how, have all the specific numbers, but it seems to be, I don't know, three and a half, four times bigger than the, the lot that is in this proposal. And there's only forty-seven homes in that subdivision. So I don't know if that kind of gives a good idea of the density of the area or whatever, if that's helpful. Obviously, I oppose the proposition, but I just thought some of that personal input might be helpful in you guys reconsidering this. That's all.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thanks, Richard. Anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item this evening? Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a recess before we ask the developer to come up and make your final comments and go into our conversation. So we'll, we'll take a ten-minute break before we officially go into break. I just want, I'm going to do a self-plug. Sorry, counsel. Next Wednesday is the State of the City address. At three twenty-nine, it'll be broadcast live. It'll also be put up on our website. It'll be broadcast live and also be put up on our website. But I think a lot, you can at least hear a lot of my comments on these issues that you brought up this evening. If you want to go in and watch it live or after the fact regarding transportation, education, growth and infrastructure and services, especially in southeast and northwest Meridian. There, there's your preview for the, for a lot of my portion of the State of the City. With that, we'll take a 10 minute recess. So we have finished up with the public testimony. Joe, I'm going to turn this over to you to help go through a few things before we ask the applicant to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I just want to touch on a few things that Steve may not be able to answer quite as well because of the, not knowing the code as well. I'm not going to touch on density. I beat that dead horse. I did want to note that the site was not required to be posted again. If there's questions about that, it's because the council continued it. So the only way that it would be required to be posted again is if council made that specific decision, which was not part of the motion. The other part of the zoning and the, not just the density, but is also the private streets. R8, which is what I keep hearing is what would be preferred, requires public street frontage. R15 does not. Therefore, private streets can only be used with R15 and up because they do not have the required street frontage. Private streets are therefore not just tied to the, I guess, ACHD's decision regarding the private streets, but also what zoning you're, you can request with that. So it's kind of a convoluted circle. We go in here with ACHD doesn't want public roads, so then we have private streets. So then we need a zoning that doesn't require public road frontage. So then you have to start with R15. So again, it's not just to get 50 units on or 80 units or anything like that. It, it's also, there's other pieces to it that I haven't touched on. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that it's not just the setbacks. That's one piece. It's not just the lot size. That's another piece. But it's also that private streets can't be proposed within R8 because of the requirement for a public street frontage. So I just wanted to make that clear for counsel.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Joe on those points?
Mr. Mayor.
House of Representatives.
One quick question, is the, the ultimate source of the private street requirement one that comes from ACHD or from the applicant's request?
It can vary.
In this case, though?
In this case, it was largely ACHD. They pushed it immediately, even in our pre-application meeting. They said that they did not want public roads because public, the use of public roads is for interconnectivity. This can't have any interconnectivity. There's no stub street from the west because the creek, the, this access to Locust Grove already doesn't meet their policy for access to a, an R, a double arterial intersection, not to mention with a roundabout. So then the other length along Victory is even shorter, so no access would meet their policies there. So it was really pushed by ACHD. They, they have noted in their staff report that if the city council prefers public roads, then it would be drastically, take up a ton of the space on the site and would render it a sea of asphalt in a large part.
Counsel, any additional questions for Joe at this time? Okay, then I'll see up.
One, one question, Mr. Mayor. Just for the, just for the, the public interest. Are you saying that if it weren't for the recommendation from ACHD to have this be R15 for private roads, it would be an R8? Given the density?
Well, again, with the density, it's not tied to the zoning.
Right.
Granted, with the dimensional standards, if you put public roads, you're never going to get this many units because of the psych constraints. So it would automatically reduce the density. But that could be with R4, with R8, with, I mean, it, it's not only because of the private streets. No, but if the applicant did request or want public roads, the density will be reduced. Hope that that was a circular answer. I apologize. It is my understanding that there is no desire to have the public roads by either the applicant or ACHD because there's no interconnectivity. We would, you know, tax dollars would be expended for roads that only serve this one community, which is a tertiary component of private roads.
Thank you, Joe.
Mayor, counsel, I'd like to also add that the private street approval is, is a director level decision. And so staffs, the directors already, already approved the private street layout for this particular development. So I just wanted to share that information with you as well.
All right, I see applicants, please come forward. Where's, file comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, again, it's Steve Arnold. I think I'll, I'll hit on some of the biggest concerns were, I'm sorry. I'll hit on some of the biggest concerns, which was the traffic. And there's been a lot of discussion about density, number of units, traffic, impacts to the adjacent roads and intersections. If we reduce down to what has been suggested tonight, down to the 20 units, that's 17 units down. And although that impact is minimal, the reduction on the intersection, we're minimal right now with the 370 trips. Now you drop it down to 200 trips, the PM peak hour is not reduced by anything respectively. But the reduction in the number of units greatly affects our developers' ability to build this. So the, the, the impact loss is greatly skewed because the impact to the neighboring community is minimal in the reduction, but huge to the developer. There was, Mr. Buckner brought up the fact that I, I tried to meet with him a week before. I know it was one of the councilman's questions, I think at several of the hearings, that have you met with the developer? And when it came down to it, you know, I didn't hear anything. I, I was proactive and reached out. And at that time, it was told to me that it didn't make sense. Annette Alonso did reach out to me and we had, you know, quite a good conversation with it. So we, we've tried to be good stewards out there. As, as can be seen with the 58, 50, 48, 37, we're, we've got a lot of faith in the, your planning staff's abilities and have taken a lot of direction from them. And I, again, I'll reiterate, I think we've gotten it down to a very nice project. There was talk about geotechnical stuff and groundwater. I've probably got one of the best soils engineer, no relation to me, but it, he's Bob Arnold. And he's does a lot of the work for me. And the, the best management practices, along with the city's stormwater pollution plans and stuff, will make sure that our stormwater doesn't affect the drinking water. And again, the, the drink, because we're not using any wells, you know, we're connecting to city potable water, we're connecting to city sewer, we'll be adding a pressure irrigation station. So because this is basically an enclave with the city surrounded by it, we're using all existing city services. So there really should be no impact to wells and water and drinking water quality. So there really should be no impact to wells and water and drinking water quality. There, there was a one discussion about the pathway and whether it's going to be open to the public. There is a pathway on the west side. We are adding a pathway on the east side adjacent to the homes. We're fencing that property boundary off with a four foot visible fence. There's not going to be, although the whole subdivision's private, we're not blocking anything from the public use. That's nearly impossible. And a lot of times you'll see HOAs that try to make their, their parks private. And that's not, you, not feasible and it does not work. So there's nothing that we're going to physically do that blocks the public. However, you know, my guess is that people use the new sidewalks along Locust, on Victory and Locust, you know, and, and most likely they, they can get onto our sidewalk along the 10 Mile Creek. There was a discussion tonight about pausing growth. I just wanted to kind of take a sidestep about what is going on in our housing market. My wife mainly deals in the new construction.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that they were referring to a moratorium. I think that's different.
Moratorium or pause, I think it, either one, it's got the same impact to the housing market. We're, we're, our median house right now is in Ada County, I believe, at 480. And that was probably three weeks ago. It's probably changed since then. You know, the affordability of our homes here in the valley, it, it's going out, out the door. And, you know, my kids, although Mr. Buckner seems to think that I'm making bank, I drive an old pickup. But, I mean, they're not going to be able to afford homes and it's going to become a problem here. And not that this is going to be automatically reduce the housing costs. What it's going to do is provide more, more product, more homes on the market that helps keep the, the prices from inflating as they are. So that's a side note. I, I, I think stopping or halting would just exasperate our current problem. I, I know if Annette's still on, if she's listening, one of her concern is that we zoned at our 15 and that, you know, potentially our client could sell it. And now we got another developer comes in with our 15. Would, this project will be subject to a development agreement and that development agreement will run with the land. So when it's approved and the development agreement goes in play, even if it is sold, the development agreement trumps the zoning. And I learned that lesson from a project I worked on in Meridian. So there was discussion about Locust Grove Road between Overland and, and Victory. That is still slated to be widened out to five lanes. That's the main reason why ACHD came and designed the roundabout for the Locust and Victory. That has not been delayed. And as, as far as I know, the delay on the roundabout, it, it, it has been minimal, although it could be pushed. This project, before we get any traffic on the road, you know, it'll take me till the first of the year 22 to get the site improvements done. And then right now we're at about six to nine months on construction. So, you know, the timing, the intersection will be well done before we get any houses there and/or people moved in. Well, there was a discussion about other traffic and has ACHD taken that into effect, the growth south? And as a part of all the traffic studies on those projects, they do take into account additional traffic. So ACHD has looked at this and the, the growth in the area and has approved it at staff level. So the, that is in their, their traffic report and they've got numbers and projections. So the people at ACHD have already approved it. There was some discussion about the continuous flow of traffic at a roundabout. Well, actually a roundabout does stop it and put a, oh, I forget, a gap or a section where there is the ability that people can get out, just like a traffic signal, traffic signals, the way the traffic engineers design them is so that they do put brakes in traffic so that the side streets can get onto the arterial. So there will be breaks where people can get out. Eventually, Locust Grove will be widened from Vic, Victory to Amity is three lanes. So we'll eventually have a center turn lane there too. We did, as it, as we're on the ACHD topic, we did push originally to try to get a, a public road out to Victory Road and connected it to Locust Grove. What I had drawn at that time is I had drive aisles coming off the public street that served cottage type product. And that's when ACHD denied us and said, no, you only can have the one access on Locust Grove. But then they granted us a fire access onto Victory. So we went with that design. There was some discussion of the trees out there. These are cottonwoods, so they're not terribly safe and they're not considered a tree of value. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Morton.
If, just going to use the question to say if there was a final comment you needed to make to close up your remarks?
No, I, I, you know, I guess I will reiterate the project itself. You know, I think we've done a lot of work with Joe over the last year and I think four months. I, I think we've honed this in and, and got something that the city will be proud of. I mean, out in the area, you know, it's the people that talked like, you know, I'm a one and done. I've been doing this in the valley for 26 years. We've done, let's see, Observation Point, Glacier Springs, Tuscany. I think those are all nice projects. When this is said and done, I think it'll be as nice as those. It's going to be unique. We want to bring a unique product type on. You know, we're going to be in it for the long haul and you'll see me again at it, probably another project in Meridian with this exact group. So that said, I'll stand for those questions and thanks for the additional follow up.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogland. I had a couple of questions that folks had kind of brought up. I thought you could touch on one, you know, 10 Mile Creek. Someone mentioned that it's, it's a flood area. I don't think it's in the, the flood zone, but can you touch on that? Is, is that a, I don't think you need flood insurance for your, your project. So.
So Mayor, Councilman Hogland, yes, there is a floodway down in the stream, but we're, everything that we're developing is out of the, the floodway or flood plain. We are going to leave it in its natural state. So we're not disturbing it at all. So it'll, you know, still be scenic and nice. We're just getting rid of the, the, the scrub trees that are out there.
Okay. Follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogland.
Yeah. And one of the people testifying concerned about the lock gate and the left turn onto Locust Grove. Can you give us how many, how much distance is between the gate to the opening? You know, if traffic backs up, it's, you know, morning rush hour and people are going out. I think that was a good question. And is there enough room for everybody? How does the gate operate?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Hogland. What we could do is, and some of those gates, you put timers on. So during the rush hour, they're fully open and then they shut. And during the, you know, in the evening commute. But between the gate and the right away, I think we've got 150, 175 feet. And we've got areas for people to either part, turn around right before the gate. So I don't expect any, any backing on it. And it, you know, going to the traffic had one, one car every 1.5 minutes. We won't see any backing on it.
Okay. Last one, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman.
And this is something that you raised and, and you've kind of addressed, Steve, is, is the, at Victory, that right in or right out type of, especially the right out to come out on Victory. So you can make a left on, onto Locust Grove makes sense. But is that definitely a no-go with ACHD?
It, it, yes, it, we were told no. It's something that we could potentially pursue, but I got to assume I'm going to hear no again. They were fairly adamant about only taking access to Locust Grove. And yeah, so I, I, I can't tell you that I'd be able to get that approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman.
To piggyback on, on Councilman Hogan's questions in regard to the entrance to your subdivision, one, one of the concerns that I have is the traffic, you know, the times during the day, in the morning commutes and the evening commutes, what that will look like trying to go from your subdivision, taking a left, going north onto Locust Grove, giving the huge amounts of traffic that are over there during that particular time.
I guess to address that right now, it, you know, it backs up past that. So, you know, it, it, but I, once the intersection is completed, we're going to see a whole different traffic pattern out there. And we'll see a, a, not the continuous flow, but it'll, it'll be a broken. And, you know, ACHD, who is our traffic expert, they're the ones that reviewed it. They wanted us to line up directly with the place across on the east side. So we're just taking their lead.
Right. Mr. Mr. Mayor, follow up comment? I, I get this, you know, this is not on you. I, I get that, you know, ACHD is the one that's driving this boat. And it is a concern for me, knowing that area well and knowing the amount of traffic that is currently on that road. It's, it's going to be tough to get out of that subdivision, you know, in the morning. So just, I don't, bad timing, I have no idea. I think this would be a much different, I'd have a much different approach. Or I certainly would alleviate that concern if that roundabout was already installed. I think it's going to make a huge difference with traffic in that area, especially winding the roads and such. So it's the only concern that I have. Just wanted to put that on the record before we close the public hearing.
Yeah. And I, Mayor Burnt, or Councilman Burnt, yeah, I, I get that. Traffic tends to take the, the direction of the least resistance.
Right.
And what will likely happen is if, if it is a problem or it's backed up, people will make a right turn, go to Amity and then go eastbound if they need to go.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman.
Follow up on Councilman Burns' questions regarding that there, the, and I don't know if we have the slide that shows the roundabout with the extra lanes, Chris or Joe, whoever has that. Where, where you match up with that entrance across, across Locust Grove. It looked like to me on the diagram that the road narrowed right there. So there's not even a center turn lane going to be put in. Is that correct?
Correct. There currently is not a center turn lane, but ultimately there will be.
That's, yes, Mr. Mayor, Steve, that's, that's my question. Will there be a center turn lane with the improvements made to that, that roadway at that point where those, that intersection is?
Yeah, the, the plan from Victory to Amity is a three lane minor arterial with a center turn lane all the way between Victory and Amity.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, follow.
Councilman.
So then my question is, will that center turn lane at that point, just prior to 10 Mile Creek, will there be a center turn lane upon completion of the roundabout and the widening? Because it looks like it narrows down. Will that center turn lane be there upon that completion? Or will it be when they do the improvements for the rest of the way up to Amity?
Mayor, Councilman Hogland, I don't know that question. I don't know the timing of that. Like I said, I, I got to rely on ACHD and them telling me where, where my driveway approaches go. There, there is a center turn lane coming south from the roundabout. I just don't know how far south ACHD has it planned. You know, I, I, ideally, we would have them extended at least down to the, our entrance. And that's something I could, I could work with ACHD or the, the city could accelerate that because they are going to have the right of way to do that turn lane from us and from the subdivision to the east of us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
Um, thank you. You don't have to comment on this, but I wanted to give you an opportunity, if you choose to, to comment on the prices you think or the price range you think you would be offering these units at.
Yeah, unfortunate, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stradler. Unfortunately, prices are going up as we speak. The new construction is between 305 and 310 a square foot right now. These being 1,700 square feet to 1,900 square feet were definitely, you know, in, in the higher end of the medium price for Ada County. But that's everywhere right now. The cost of lumber right now is high material, all the building material is high, trying to get contractors is high. So I, I don't know where the price will be in a year and a half from now when we're ready to start building. I'm hoping the prices come down and lumber comes down. We've seen some lumber reducing over the last couple of weeks. You know, I'm hoping that now that they freed up the COVID restraints, that the supply chain starts getting things to the suppliers. And hoping it gets more affordable because it's expensive right now to build.
Mr. Mayor, just an additional question?
Councilman Schrader.
If you could comment on, you know, we've seen ACHD delay projects in the past. And it's a concern of mine as well, the traffic. I, I don't think that the two council members that have voiced that are the only ones that, I certainly share that concern. You know, on balance, if that's a major concern, are, are you open to some type of a delay as a, as a possible solution? Or how would you tackle that? Or just wondering if you've been thinking about that at all in the context of this conversation?
Mayor, Councilman Stradler. No, I've not thought about that much. I, I know that the, the five, the five lane from Overland to Victory on Locust Grove has not been delayed. So I'm fairly confident that this is still going to occur before we get our, our building permits. And, and again, right now, building is taking between, you know, I'm lucky at six months, but it's closer to nine months to turn a new home around. So I'm fairly confident that that roundabout will be done prior to any of this adding traffic to it. My understanding, the only delay is they're relooking at right of way. It's not the roadway design itself per se, or the roundabout that it's just right of way with.
Thanks for the comments. And I guess maybe just to check back if ACHD has joined the meeting, it might be worthwhile to hear from them.
I still don't see anyone from ACHD joining us this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman. Councilman Kavner.
Eva, I wanna make sure when I heard you correct in kind of the opening part of your rebuttal, we heard it was suggested by a number of the residents tonight about, it seemed to be more supportive in a, in a reduction of units. I recognize from where this project started, where we are tonight, this, a lot of units been reduced already. But did I hear you correctly that any further reduction in units would make this project unfeasible for you and your client?
Mayor, Councilman Kavner, I have not had that conversation with my client, but that greater reduction, I would guess it would.
Council, any further questions for the applicant? Thank you. I assume we'll leave the public hearing open for a few minutes while we talk amongst yourselves, ourselves.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Happy to at least get the, the conversation going. And I think it's, it's a challenging spot for this applicant, because the traffic problems he did not create, this is kind of the, the fly that's breaking the camel's back. And you all know, I, I live right over here, I'm, I'm right off of Victory at Locust Grove. So when I hear folks talk about the challenges there, I'm with you. I changed my schedule at my job so that I could avoid that intersection at 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So I sympathize, I hear what you're saying, but those challenges weren't the applicant's doing, it's, we're all to blame. We're the ones who moved there, we're the ones who have, have clogged up these streets and roads. And so I, I'm always somewhat challenged to hold the persons before us accountable for the decisions that we've all made to, to live there. But I am sympathetic that we don't wanna add any more traffic to that particular intersection. I voiced some real concerns about this project from the get-go. Really tried hard to do my due diligence and go back and look at both the historical from before we remanded it back to P and Z to where we are today, and applaud the applicant for trying to take necessary steps to reduce this to try and meet the intention of the council. I, as I was sitting here, kind of debating this, Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Schrader really brought up kind of, I think, where I've landed, which is that this project very well may fit in this part of Meridian. But I don't think that I feel comfortable with it fitting in this part of Meridian until we figure out what Victory and Locust Grove is really gonna look like. And we had this before us in March, I voiced some concerns about the design, it was a little out of whack with what we've got over there in the, in, in that part of Meridian. I've come to kind of appreciate it, it is a little bit different, anything that's different and new, it takes me a lot of time to wrap my head around. I think these could be cool, I just don't know if they would be cool in this part of Meridian. So I think that's kind of where I'm at, is that I'm not supportive of this project moving forward. I don't know how we could continue it out or limit it until the roadway improvements have been completed and we could look at it. I'm open to suggestions on that, I appreciate keeping the, the public hearing open if there's suggestions or ideas around that. But tried really hard to convince myself that this would be a good fit, and it very well may be, it's just not, I think, a good fit.
Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Just a comment, I, I just feel like I don't have enough information from ACHD to really know if this is workable or not. I, I think if, if it's a definite no on right-in, right-out, okay, that's a piece of the puzzle. Center turn lane, what is the length of that right-of-way and the expansion going to be when that roundabout is constructed? How does that work there? And also the overall timing of that roundabout. I really think, I mean, this choir was well-prepared, they all sang about traffic in one voice, it sounded pretty good, too. Didn't even rehearse, I bet. So to make an informed decision, I just, I just think I need more information before I'm ready to say yea or nay on, on this project. There's a lot of good elements to it for a difficult site. And I know for you folks who live in R4 or possibly R2 neighborhood, to see those types of neighborhoods in Meridian now, for what we see, they are rare. This is what we're seeing throughout our community now, it's just the way it is. They are trying to lower the price point, or at least keep it reasonable. And I'm sure a lot of you are like me, I cannot, I would not be able to afford the house I live in today to purchase it now at its value. I, I don't make that much money. So the, the value has skyrocketed, it's great, you know, on paper, but yeah. And, and so it's, it's that balancing act for my kids and future generations, how do, how do we make everything fit? We also have a comp plan that talks about, and staff reminds us from time to time that don't forget, we need a diversity of housing, we don't want everything to look the same. Anyway, just, well, does it fit here, does it fit there? So I guess my bottom line is, I, I would like to get more information from ACHD and have a discussion, whether it's at the staff level, for them to get some answers on a definite right-in, right-out, timing of the roundabout, and where does that road narrow down, is there a turn lane? That, that to me, I would like to have that before I make a decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Somewhat of a pivot off of Councilman Hogan's comments. It's an annexation application with a zoning request, the applicants presented this. The question for us, it's just the exercise of discretion, if this is in the city's best interest to approve this at this time as presented. And materials in preparation for today and all the public comment has highlighted some of the, the well-stated concerns with this application as presented. And the comments about reducing zoning or reducing density isn't something that the council can do as part of the decision-making process. The application is accepted, or it's not, as presented, the applicant can choose to apply how they, how they see fit. With that mindset, that's how I looked at this in preparation and in hearing today's comments. I'm comfortable making a decision tonight. The way I look at a situation where there's, if there's incomplete information to make a decision, then it's not something that I'm comfortable approving. One of the challenges I have with this application here, and to the earlier comment of is it in Meridian's best interest for this application to be on this site at this time? I don't have sufficient information that makes me convinced that the answer is yes. And some of those comments, I don't think get remedied with more information. I think this, there's a reason why ACHD would prohibit access even as presented. There's a reason why ACHD has to make an exception to their policy, just to allow this access to exist. It's the furthest they could possibly could get, but it is, it is, from an engineering perspective, too close to the intersection. It'd still be approved, but it begs the question, is it the right decision? Just because you can doesn't mean you should. The fact that this is extremely busy highlights that concern. Fact that there are, as had been pointed out, unanswered questions as to the ultimate design and timing of this roundabout at this extremely busy location compounds those concerns. The fact that ACHD doesn't perhaps want to put public streets in here does not move me much, that's their job, that's what we pay taxes for, and they very well should fund it themselves. ACHD permits public streets, that therefore might allow much less intense use at this very tricky location. That, and that's the best decision from Meridian long-term, and let's do that. So I don't think we're there, and quite frankly, I don't think time gets us there. I think it's a beautiful project, Steve always does great work and he's a straight shooter. I just think it's the wrong spot for a great project. So I'm comfortable making a decision, but it's not something that I would approve as presented.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
You know, I, just looking at this, I share a lot of my fellow councilmembers' comments and thoughts and considerations. You know, I think it's important, though, to keep in mind, we really do need to keep building housing. So I wanna make sure that that message is clear, I don't think that a moratorium on building housing is in Meridian's best interests at all. I've just heard that comment a lot tonight, and I think that would devastate our community, we've had a huge housing shortage. That being said, the traffic situation right now is very acute, and that's coming through loud and clear. Clearly, this is a very tricky piece of land in that context. And so I, I'm not there on this project tonight, I would be open to seeing it in another, after a period of time, if ACHD, you know, can further clarify their concrete plans and we had more definitive guidance from them that, that these road improvements were gonna happen, I do believe they would seriously help this area. So I'm not against this project at all, I, I like this project in the sense that it, it's contributing housing, hopefully additional supply will help keep prices reasonable. But at this time, I do agree that the, the traffic situation is not, not at a level that can be handle any additional housing. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, you're looking at me like, Councilman Burnt, you gonna say something or not?
Well, I will if you won't, but I wanna give you the opportunity first.
Already, I, I'm good, I've already explained my thoughts, so.
Okay. Well, like, like Councilman Kavner, I live in this part of the community and live down Locust Grove, I come out and I drive through this intersection every day on my way to work. So very familiar with, with the challenges, I do think that when the road improvements are made, we will see a change in, in the traffic in the area for a while. But there will be other problems, too. But as it relates to this specific application, you know, specifically, I think the best thing for this property is to find out what happens when the road improvements are made, so that we actually see what it looks and feels like in this part of the community.
Perfect.
It's, it, I'm not getting, you know, I'm no found a roundabouts, but I've told ACHD I'm not gonna oppose this one, because there is a place and time for roundabouts. But how they interact and how people can move in and out of them effectively can help determine what is. And I am concerned when ACHD starts putting a lot of restrictions on this property, and, you know, I'm gonna be transparent as I can be on this one. You know, if there's, if there's restrictions to access on this property, I can see this being a lawsuit at ACHD, I can see this being very expensive for all of us taxpayers, we're gonna have to pay, which guess what? Your road improvements are gonna be made in other parts of our community, perhaps in South Meridian. You know, because when this, this is a very tricky, difficult piece of property with its location and proximity to a roundabout in this, in this case. So I may be a little further than from our council list in terms of, I don't think we should really consider annexation of this property till we see how the road network changes with the, with the Locust Grove improvements and the intersection improvements right there. That's where I would be before, I would hope an application would come back, including all the issues that Councilman Hogan raised about other issues from that standpoint. Those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
I, I think we're in agreement that, you know, if we were to vote on this tonight, and based on the information that I have available, I could not support this application because of, you know, the information's not there and I can't, hope it's gonna work out. We've gotta be fairly certain of some things. I guess it's a matter of do we, you know, deny, or is it something that we bring back? Do we remand to planning and zoning? You know, and I don't think we've closed the public hearing, so I don't know if the applicant would like to speak to that, knowing the sentiments that have been expressed on how that process moves forward. Because it does, how we go about that does impact, if they do make changes in a timely fashion and where the timeline is, I don't know, but I, I'd look to others to provide guidance on that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
No, Steve wants to come up and speak, that, that's fine, but I, I think that, I think that, like, I think that tonight, I think we're in a position where we can make a decision. And I think that I've heard our fellow councilmembers and what they've said and what they're ready to do. So I think that, to answer your question, Councilman Hogan, I think tonight, I think we're in a position where we can make a decision. Steve, if you wanna come up and, I guess, Mayor, if you're a mayor, it's okay.
Absolutely, it's not closed.
I guess for the developer's standpoint, obviously, we would prefer not a vote tonight and to get further information from ACHD, that would be our preference, but, no, that's your vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Steve, you've heard the comments from council tonight. Do you think the Highway District could provide greater clarity to us about our concerns in a timely manner?
Mayor, Councilman Kavner, yeah, when you say timely, you know, you know, if we can maybe delay it to a date uncertain, but, or delay it for a month, I, I think I could probably get answers from ACHD within a month about, because I've heard right-in, right-out, I've heard timing on the intersection improvements, and some other questions about the widening of Locust Grove Road. And I think having a, a person here from ACHD would be of benefit to the council.
Thank you. Council, what's your pleasure or thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I think your comments with regards to timing are, are well-stated here. Sometimes continuances make sense, I think we're in the spot to make decisions, and I think we have to make it tonight. Otherwise, you're continuing it to 2026, right? In essence, to sort of see how this builds out, and that doesn't help you either. So to be honest to you and in this application, I think it's incumbent upon us to decide it tonight.
Councilman Kavner.
If we close the public hearing on H-2020-0102.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing, is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, you guys have it. Councilman Kavner.
After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to deny file number H-2020-0100 as presented in the hearing on May 25th, 2021, for the following reasons has been summarized by all members of the city council. There's a variety of reasons, but most specifically, this project is not, just does not meet the best interest of our community at this point. Second.
I have a motion second, is there a discussion on the motion? Councilman Kavner.
I just, I think this is, again, a, a high score in terms of public involvement. Appreciate the applicant, the community being here tonight, got a little bit of rough patch at the start, but I appreciate everybody's willingness to be respectful and neighborly. You guys are all good examples of our community, I appreciate all being here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Just to highlight what Councilman Kavner mentioned about how, about the rough patch at the beginning, just, and I know there's a lot of eyes and ears that listen to these meetings, but those who are providing testimony, it never helps to disparage any member of staff or, or any, any employee that works for the city of Meridian. If you truly do have concerns about how we do business, I think it's way more effective to have those conversations offline. And honestly, they do nothing, to my opinion, whether it's for or against, it's just a motion and it's not needed.
Any further question or any further comments on the motion? Call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Kavner.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is denied. So with that, let's take a five-minute recess while we let the room, for those that need to, aren't sticking around for the rest of the evening. for those that need to, aren't sticking around for the rest of the evening. All right, council, we'll go ahead and come back from recess so we can try to move through the rest of our evening agenda. Next item is a public he- hearing for Gramercy Commons H 2020 dash zero zero two two. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments and turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, this is for Gramercy Commons. It is for a development agreement modification. Site consists of 6.9 acres of land currently zoned CG located across three different parcels on west of South Wells Avenue. It is adjacent to the east boundary of Mountain View High School. It was annexed and zoned in 2006 under the Kenai subdivision. Has an existing DA as noted, plotted, final plotted. And why did I put, no, okay. Comprehensive plan out here is mixed use regional, which contemplates looking well beyond the existing sites for, you know, not only different land uses, but also interconnectivity. And how all the land uses work together and integrate with each other, complement each other, if you will. The request before you is to modify the existing development agreement for the purpose of amending the concept plan, which really is essentially just the preliminary plot. Didn't have any other development other than this shown, which was just the zoning and the three lots. It is, uh, for the purpose of amending the concept plan to incorporate 164 age restricted multifamily housing units instead of general commercial. As noted, the existing concept plan is just the plat with the CG zoning. The new development plan depicts a singular building that is a multi-level, age-restricted, multifamily apartment complex that is wrapped around a parking structure, something we have not seen here in Meridian. Parking structure is proposed to contain a majority of the required parking spaces, which you can see the parking data on the right hand side, and they actually did include our future requirement of one space per 10 units, which they did not technically have to do. That, there is a concurrent conditional use permit application, which depending on the decision tonight will be heard next Thursday. So some of this data has not been analyzed for this specific presentation. In addition to the building, the new development plan depicts multiple areas of open space and amenities located along each side of the building to include a pool and other amenities within a south courtyard and entry plaza along the east side of the building, fire pits and lounging areas along the west side and a community garden and pickleball court along the north side. All of the open space and amenities appear to meet, or they appear to be connected with sidewalks and easily accessible for future residents. The submitted elevations are for illustrative purposes only, and further refinement is necessary to comply with Architectural Standards Manual, as well as the additional design elements within the Gramercy development overall. As seen on the proposed development pan, plan, the applicant is proposing to connect to three adjacent dry aisles to provide access to the apartment complex. Which would be one to the north and two to the east. The two to the east are currently existing. The one to the north exists at the north side of the northernmost property, and they will be constructing this segment of it. ACHD does not act on development agreement modifications, but has provided a response letter with the concurrent CUP as noted. In the response letter, ACHD noted that no improvements are required to any public roads. And they also did not require traffic impact study because the development is not estimated to generate enough peak hour vehicle trips, despite the proposal, uh, the proposal being over 100 units. HD, ACHD has noted that all adjacent public roads are overbuilt and are capable of handling additional vehicle trips without issue. Therefore, staff is supportive of the pro development in regards to its transportation impact. The applicant also intends on connecting to the multi-use pathway, butting the site to the south for added pedestrian access to the commercial uses within Gramercy and to the public park south of the school. Staff finds the, that proposing an apartment complex specifically age restricted in this area of the city that is in close proximity to commercial development, child and charter schools, and established regional pedestrian facilities warrants a DA mod and supports the proposed development. Staff does recommend approval. And following that, uh, there was no written testimony against or for this project, so I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions? Councilman Borden.
One quick question, Joe, on in, in general, or is, is the application to approve the, the DA amendment to allow the use, but not necessarily the actual plan itself, or is the, is the plan as depicted part of the approval? Understanding that there's architectural design review later. We merely have been asked to approve an expansion of the usage of this.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, that's a great question. It's kind of both. It is also to replace the use of general commercial shown on the existing plat with multifamily, age restricted, but also generally the concept plan. Yes, this is the same plan that they are proposing with the CUP, which generally they wouldn't be required to present this much detail in the concept plan, but they've chosen to do so, which we appreciate always. From staff's perspective, um, obviously minor adjustments might be made here and there. I know that there are some continued discussions with how the trash enclosure and compact area may be redesigned. That's something that wouldn't require an additional DA mod, but we would handle that amongst the CUP and/or with the CCC. So it is for both to, as a shorthand.
Tied to this.
Yes.
Thanks.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Okay, with the applicant, please come forward.
So nice to see everybody in person again. It is very nice to see everybody in person. I was just thinking that the only thing I'll miss about Meridian Zoom meetings is I won't be able to covet Councilmember Cavanagh's awesome office desk chair anymore. That thing's awesome. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street is my work address in Boise. We are here tonight to discuss an amendment to the development agreement for Gramercy. Uh, it's, everyone's very familiar with it. It's a successful mixed use project. It's been going for about 15 years. The backside of it's been a little bit slower to come along, and this is going to help, I think, move that process forward. That area is less visible, therefore it's less commercially viable. That's why we're, we're that in a nutshell is the reason why we're here to have this conversation tonight. So our presentation is going to move forward in two phases. First, going to Councilmember Borden's point, uh, we want to make sure that you as a council know exactly what it is that you, that is being proposed here. We have a condition of approval that our proposal, or that we move forward with something that's substantially in conformance with the concept that we're going to be providing tonight. So we have Tina Reedfall and Mark Sindel with GGLO Architects. They're online. And they will provide kind of a basic overview of the look and the feel, how it fits within the neighborhood. And then I'll return, I'll go over a few technical defail, uh, details and then talk about, a little about the process, how we go forward from here. In the meantime, I do want to note that Aaron Elton and Mike Chittister with the Meridian Based Ownership Group are also here. And they'll be available to help answer questions if, if I drop the ball on anything. So with that, let's, uh, switch over to Tina and Mark. So I think they're online, Chris.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clark, they are, and they have the ability to unmute.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. This is Mark Sindel. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So Mark Sindel, Principal with GGLO, 1199 Shoreline Lane, Suite 290 Boise in Idaho, of course, that's the work address. And then I'll just say advance on the slides for whoever's controlling the slideshow. So let's go ahead and keep going. So we always like to start with your comp plan, and this is directly from your comp plan related to the zone. And specifically talks about multifamily residential may be allowed in some cases, but should be careful to promote a high quality of life through thoughtful site design connectivity and amenities. And this really became the basis for the development of the design that you're seeing, um, tonight. Uh, next slide, please. Of course, next we looked at the Gramercy experience and the notion of homes, workplaces and shopping blending seamlessly into an urban inspired community. And we're pretty confident that the proposal that we've got before you is going to be successful with proximity and walkability and perpetuate the basic goals of the Gramercy District. And there's an amazing start of the Gramercy experience with the work to date. And we think this is an evolved way to grow that experience and to really accomplish the goals. We're pretty excited about that. Next slide, please. Of course, location wise, the site is adjacent to ball fields and a school. It's walking distance to shops, parks, commercial and health services. And overall, the site is really ideal, given those proximities to age restricted multifamily housing. And if planned wisely, it can open up opportunities for adjacent future development sites, particularly to the north. Next slide. This shows proximity, some of those connections that Joe mentioned to trails. And as also mentioned, we're looking at having a well-connected network of pedestrian amenities that then connect to the broader network of the district. Next slide. Which brings us to parking. So livability, a goal of the Gramercy District, means more space for people and open space and a recognition that absolutely we need to accommodate cars, but not at the expense of livability. So to that end, we studied the impact of a four level wrapped garage over a surface parking lot, choosing it over a surface parking lot, and what that could mean for livability goals for the district. The punchline is that we're reducing by two third how much of quote unquote paradise is being paved by a parking lot for U70s or even 90s rock fans. Uh, and there's an added benefit, of course, that most residents park on the floor that they live on. So proximity for parking is, uh, really strong in this arrangement. Parking is hidden, parking is not diminished, but that leaves an outward expression of quality building frontages and open spaces for the community. So if you keep going, next slide. Keep going. So here's what we're proposing, a parking garage tucked behind a high quality building with large amenity spaces immersed in a beautiful, regionally expressive landscape. The project faces the district with outward facing plazas and frontages. Next slide. Keep going. As you see here, uh, this is more of the public facing commercial expression. Keep going. And then, uh, with residential scale frontages and amenities, amenities facing the more pastoral ball fields and the high school. And as we rotate, um, this view, you can see the garage wrapped, um, and immersed in that landscape with the convenience parking and some of the amenities that Tina will talk about a little bit more. So first of all, a little more amenity on those, a little more detail on those amenities, if you go to the next slide. Um, as was mentioned, there are community gardens proposed on the north as well as pollinator gardens, pickleball courts and a pool deck. Um, and then the fire pit lounges on the west. So pool deck you see on the south, you see the pickleball court, community gardens on the north, and then plaza on the east. So let's get into some of the architecture next. Turn it over to Tina. Keep going.
And you can keep going. Yeah. Good evening, uh, Tina Rettvel, GGLO, 1199 Shoreline Lane, Boise. That's the office address in Boise. I'll walk everyone through the current development of the design and explain a little bit about the thinking that went into this proposal. As Mark mentioned, the Gramercy District vision talks about a blending of uses, shop, work and live, and an urban inspired community. In the visual on the left, we've highlighted retail in red, office in yellow and residential in blue. We recognize that in inserting residential into this office swath of development, we would need to make some references to the current buildings in the vicinity. We also recognize the opportunity for the scale of the building to bridge between the high school and smaller scale residential and office around the northeast and south sides of the project. So on the top right, we're suggesting using the Gramercy brick, uh, the renderings, uh, we've shared in the packet and here show it a, a little bit more orange, uh, but the intent is to be consistent with the district brick color. On the middle right here, uh, you see residential bays along the western edge of the project. We'll use stucco also in the palette of the rest of the development. And bottom right, we want to express a residential texture. So an alternating lap siding is proposed for the upper portions of the east and the majority of the building body. Go ahead, next slide. Each side of the building demands a different response. Uh, for example, the eastern edge is the more public side of the project with amenity uses clad in the Gramercy brick. The west will get pounded by solar rays and is adjacent to the Mountain View High School. So on that side, we focused on shading strategies, consolidating glazing areas and a more residential modulation. Uh, next slide. The east entrance plaza, uh, we were careful to make this side of the project relatable to the office or commercial uses in the zone by bringing in a base that references that Gramercy retail district and weave into the established language of the district. The upper levels on this side bring in that residential texture of the lap siding. We understand we have some work to do to present a more residential, high quality, um, aesthetic and we want that to, uh, we want this to be a great place for people to live, um, and, and to love living here. Uh, next slide. By stacking the parking in a structure buried in the building like, like Mark stated, we gain considerable open space to consolidate areas for more significant outdoor amenity areas. The amenities take on a bit of a commercial or resort vibe with clean volumes and stucco on a body of residential texture. Next slide. We added this rendering of the western edge of the project. We, we didn't show that in our package before. It illustrates the intent of this side to be the more residential face of the project facing the high school. We're using stepped bays to create shading, uh, from the afternoon sun. Uh, next slide. And the elevations, the top elevation shows the east side of the project adjacent to other office and commercial parcelcy. Uh, the center of that elevation houses the entry plaza and amenity spaces. The building terraces down a story to the south relating to adjacent lower-rise structures. The south elevation is at the bottom of the page with the amenity building in the middle. This outbuilding provides privacy for the pool deck. The south facades feature consolidated glazing areas and deep overhangs to both take advantage of views to the south and to protect against harsh rays. Next slide. The western high school-facing elevation is at the top. A layering of bays helped protect private open space from solar exposure, yet allow the views to the southwest. Again, you see the building terracing towards the low rise to the south. And then the north elevation ties into the retail and office vocabulary here below. Inset decks at the upper levels provide protected, private, open spaces to residents and views out over the pickleball court and gardens. The garage entry is from this side, and will incorporate clearance to get emergency vehicles into the first level of the parking garage. Next slide. And I'll pass it off here for some nuts and bolts regarding the modification request.
Okay, well, it's Heath again, 251 East Front Street. So as we finish this up, I just want to focus on the kind of the process to how to get where we're hoping to get. So again, this was previously annexed as part of the Keen Eye subdivision that we now know as Gramercy, 15 years old. It includes this development agreement. It's already zoned as CG. So multifamily could go, just as a matter of zoning, with the conditional use permit. It's only the development agreement modification that needs to occur here. And as Joe mentioned, this has been set up such that you get a chance to look at it first before we go to P&amp;Z next week on the conditional use permit. As we look at the proposal, it's a well-developed, detailed application. It meets or exceeds the requirements for parking, open space, amenities, meets the dimensional standards. We are proposing that it remain within the existing Gramercy development agreements. That means that the cross-parking and cross-access and everything that we like about Gramercy remains in place. It's an age-targeted facility. It's very near services. As Tina and Mark mentioned, all of those services are well within walking distance, so it's a great spot for this type of a project. It provides a very nice buffer between Mountain View High School and its facilities and the residential and commercial development on the north and on the east. As far as agency review, the agencies have indicated no issues. ACHD again shows no improvements required to area roadways. Staff has been great to work with, is typical. We appreciate Joe a great deal. As we looked at the staff report, there's just two things that I wanted to mention. One was that staff had identified that they wanted to see a more delineated connection between the project and the pathways to the south. So we've done an updated plan here to show that we are going to include those. We'll use pavers or other elements to make sure that that's very clear, that people would be guided down to those pathways. And then the other was just a kind of a clarification on the fourth additional staff item. It had indicated that the northern property would not be used for any sort of a multifamily use, essentially in a nutshell. As you can see here on this drawing, there is some overlap there in terms of shared facilities. And so we're all on board with the content or the concept of that condition. What we suggest is that we just tweak that a little bit to just say that the condition would not preclude joint-use facilities. You can see that about halfway through the paragraph there, including parking areas to be used for the subject property, which is the area with the project we're talking about tonight, and parcel 323 blah blah blah, which is the one that would retain commercial use on it. And that's the parcel there to the north that's shown in here in blue. So with that, we appreciate everyone's review on this, and we would ask for your approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Heath. And I'll start the questions off. So when I go to lunch at my favorite restaurant in Meridian, Gramercy Park, Pizza and Grill, I could come park in your parking garage?
Mr. Mayor, that's, I don't know about in the garage, but we are providing additional surface parking.
Oh, okay. God for the clarification, because I know cross-parking out there is, can be a big issue.
It is, and I work with the Gramercy developer and with the Gramercy Owners Association, as Mr. Nary knows very well. And so we are working to address that issue.
Counsel, any additional questions? Counselor Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heath, it's great to see you in person. I guess a comment and then a question. I love the parking wrap and putting that on the interior core of the building. That makes me so happy to see that here. So I appreciate that. Question for you, I guess I'm a little puzzled by your comment about joint-use facilities to the north. Could you just give me an example of what that might mean?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, I don't, did I say joint-use facilities?
Yes, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay, I apologize. So what I was referring to there, and I, Councilmember Schrader, I apologize, I was picturing way further north, like in the, in the other commercial areas. So in, when I refer to joint-use facilities, what I'm really referring to is the yellow area that you can see here. That would be shared parking between this lot and the future commercial on the north. And so when I refer to joint-use facilities, I'm talking about that.
Thank you.
Counsel Morton.
Tell on that. If we could put that, that condition up again. It's a great question. I was wondering the language to nerd out a little bit. It says, "shall not preclude joint-use facilities, including parking," which presumes is a joint-use facility that's other than parking. So what would you contemplate to be a joint-use facility that's not parking?
I would contemplate that to be, you know, make potentially utilities, you know, items that are serving both sides of the, of the two projects, because it is in common ownership, so there would be the possibility of those types of. And we're happy to refine that language.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Morton.
It's really helpful back, the DA that started this, that precluded multifamily unless it came back, which is the only way counsel gets to see it. That's great, because it allows us the chance to go through what we're doing now, since the CUP doesn't get to us. So if there's language that might more narrowly refine what you mean, it sounds like it's basically parking and maybe some ancillary utilities. Just so some future counsel isn't asked to interpret what joint-use facilities, that could be interpreted to be pretty broad, too. Isn't your intent, so?
No. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. That's not the intent. This is really just a clarifying amendment. It's not substantive. We're not trying to be substantively different, which staff's intent was to just ensure that that northern parcel remained on the commercial side of things. Because of this overlap, we wanted to make sure that we weren't automatically going to be in violation of that. As it stands right now, it's really just the parking facilities that we contemplate being on that other side.
As part of this, I don't know if you work with planning staff or legal to come up with some language that more narrowly describes that?
That would be great.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Mr. Corcoran, do we have anybody sign up in advance to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item? Or anybody online who'd like to provide testimony? If you'd like to do so, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of Zoom or step up to the podium. Seeing no one was seen to testify, would the applicant like to make any final comments? No final comments from the applicant? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel Morton.
We take pretty good caution in permitting multifamily in CG, protective of the commercial. This one has been available, ready, willing, and able for commercial for a long time. Where it's located is perhaps permanently hampered its ability to develop this stuff. So this might be one of the more fitting exceptions, I think, to allow multifamily. The way it's been presented makes it even easier to justify altering the DA, allowing that use as presented, understanding that there's firm sideboards on how it's going to be designed. Counselman Schrader's comments about the garage, spot on. You can hear that from all of us. That's a really neat feature. Hopefully, we see more of that in some of these. I think it's, I think it's one we can certainly move on at.
Counsel Morton.
Not other discussion. I'm just going to move that we close the public hearing on H 2021-0022.
And the motion?
A motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Counsel Morton.
Do we approve H 2021-0022, the DA modification request as set forth in the staff report of May 25, 2021, to include the applicant's comments with regards to the staff conditions, joint-use facilities, and the crafting language with legal that narrows that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, Corcoran, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton, Cavanagh, Schrader, Ogden, Burnt.
All ayes. Motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Counsel, next item up is a public hearing for 3175 North 10 Mile, H 2020-0122. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You got to hear me one more time. Tonight, at least. Sorry, I'm not, that wasn't about my future employment or anything, just. This is my last item tonight. 3175 North 10 Mile for a rezone and development agreement modification. Site consists of 1.1 acres of land zoned R4, located at the southwest corner of 10 Mile and Ustick Road, as seen on the maps. The adjacent land uses are CG to the north and additional commercial zoning in general. R4 and single-family in all the directions. It was annexed in 2010 under ACHD 10 Mile. It was originally an ACHD-owned property, from my understanding. They sold it off, and there is an existing development agreement and which required modification after further staff analysis. The request is to rezone this property from R4 to LO, consistent with a provision within the Meridian Comprehensive Plan for the purpose of constructing an approximate 10,000-square-foot, single-story office building with 42 parking spaces. Only 20 are required per the size of the building, in lieu of residential development, which required the development agreement modification before you tonight. Commission only heard the rezone. Following that, the applicant applied for the concurrent development agreement, because it only needs to go to council. Their point for that is to replace the existing agreement altogether, enter into a new agreement based upon the current and proposed concept plan. Subject site is somewhat of a residentially-zoned out parcel due to the fact that it is located in a hard corner of two arterial streets and has no local street access, similar to our earlier project, just much smaller and not for 37 homes. Proposed use is for a dental office, which is principally permitted within the LO zoning district. The applicant has submitted a site plan that shows compliance with all dimensional standards for commercial development. With the proposed site plan and proposed use, staff finds that the rezone and use to be consistent with the comp plan. Subject site was annexed until 2010. As noted, staff analyzed the application and existing DA and realized that the DA mod is also required, since the original, I'm sorry, the original DA contemplated residential versus commercial. Number of the proposed parking spaces are facing directly towards a home, which does exist here, and to the west and south. But a number of the parking spaces face towards this lot in the southwest corner of the site. Staff finds that the proposed landscaping and existing wood fence may not be enough screening to mitigate light and noise pollution from those patrons using those spaces. Therefore, staff did recommend that the landscape buffer be widened to 30 feet instead of their minimum required 20 feet for just this area adjacent to the southwest corner, because of the parking spaces facing in. So just this buffer. The change would not compromise any other dimensional standard on site, because the drivevials are currently shown well over the minimum requirements. They would still be at least five feet wider than the requirement. Commission agreed with this condition and recommended approval with that. Access to the site is proposed via two connections from the applicant. One right-in-only access, which is proposed to Ustick, and one right-in, right-out access to 10 Mile. The proposed access to Ustick does not meet ACHD policy, but was a negotiated access at the time of the property sale. The proposed access to 10 Mile also does not meet ACHD policy, but is recommended for approval within their staff report, because again, it's the furthest place they could, they can place it from the intersection. Staff supports the proposed unlimited access to 10 Mile commensurate with the approval from ACHD. In addition to the access on Ustick not meeting ACHD policy, the city can further restrict access despite ACHD previously granting it. The proposed access to Ustick is proposed as an entrance-only, but there would be no true way to restrict vehicles from exiting. In addition, this access point is directly within a right-hand turn lane on Ustick, which intensifies the safety issues associated with the access point. Therefore, through UDC 11383, staff does recommend the proposed Ustick access not be approved and instead utilize it as an emergency-only access barricaded with knock-down bollards that Mr. Banjorno approves. This applicant is still requesting to keep the Ustick entrance-only access. Planning and zoning commission, as noted, did recommend approval of it at the hearing. It was discussed. The fire access concerns, if any, but specifically regarding the reduction in the drive-vial width. There was also discussion on the kind of uses that could reside within the building beyond a dentist's office, because the dental office is not expected to take up all 10,000 square feet, which, to answer that, would be limited office, very low-intensity uses. Restaurant is a conditional use, so that would come before commission. If anybody ever proposed that, that came up at the hearing, so I just wanted to bring that up. Different options of mitigating the noise and light beyond the widening of the required landscape buffer was also adjacent to the residential was also discussed. The applicant did not submit revised plans showing the enlarged buffer, but staff is not concerned, as we can handle that with the future CCC if the application is approved tonight. After that, I will stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions?
Counsel.
That was the applicant. Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, one bear.
Joe, just to confirm, this dentist office, right?
Yes, sir. They're just not taking up all 10,000 square feet. There's potential for a multi-tenant building. I believe it's the right-hand suite is not in a part of the dental office. But it is the dental dentist who owns the property and will own the building.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, one holding.
Just follow up on that, Joe. That, that does restrict, because of how it's being conditioned and whatnot, the hours are restricted 6 to 11, is that correct?
That is correct. 6 to 10, because of the LO zoning adjacent to residential.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Okay, is the applicant with us? You can say your name and address for there. It couldn't be recognized for 15 minutes.
My name is Jessica Petty, 2882 South Honeycomb Way. I'm the architect on the project, and I'm representing Dr. Rigby tonight. Dr. Rigby is the owner, and he will be the owner of the dental office as well. What we're proposing is a 10,000-square-foot building. He'll occupy approximately a third of it for his dental practice, family dentist's practice. And then, right now, it will just be a vanilla TI for the other two tenants until we find someone. But like Joe said, ideally, it would be another orthodontist, veterinary clinic, something very similar that would work well and work well within the neighborhood. We're proposing to put the building in the far upper-right corner to keep it away from the existing neighborhoods. We've been working very closely with the neighbors, trying to listen to their wants and needs as well as keeping our project feasible. We are completely on board with all the staff recommendations for increasing the buffer to 30 feet. We're going to propose to do a berm to kind of hide the parking, hopefully decrease some of the noise, headlights, whatnot, that were as a concern for the neighbors. And in general, we're, we are on board with everything. The only thing we are asking is that you do consider the right-in-only access point. When Dr. Rigby purchased the property, before buying, he did his due diligence. He went to ACHD. He talked to them about what, what they would allow and kind of how he envisioned his building working with the flow of parking. And so for him, it is important to have the right-in-only off of Ustick, as well as the two-way off of 10 Mile. We feel that having the right-in-only will help reduce some of the traffic flow from all of it only coming in and out at 10 Mile. And that was a big concern, especially for the residents down in the southern corner with their kids. in the southern corner with their kids and and just their family life having an increase in traffic. So we do ask that you consider that, but ultimately tonight, we would just like to walk out with our approval so we can get on to design review, so thank you, if you have any questions.
Thank you, council, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, Mr. Clark, do we have anyone to sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, if there's anybody in the audience would like to provide testimony, please come forward at this time, or if there's anybody online, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the Zoom, looks like we have someone online.
Mr. Mayor, Stephen Rankin?
Hello, everybody, myself and my wife are here and we are.
Unmute yourself and say your name and address for the record.
Yep, can you guys hear us? Can you hear us?
And we cannot hear you.
Hello?
Hello, hello? Hello?
The audio appears to be moving, we're just not receiving it here.
Well.
Let me try something on our end to make sure.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, can you guys hear us, we can, we are unmuted on our end, so it's something going on on your end. Hello? Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Hello? Hello?
They muted us.
Barely, give me one second here.
Okay. Let us know, we'll, we'll keep talking.
Yeah, the host muted us at one point, so I'm sure it's on the permissions for your guys' end.
You'll be hearing it through another.
Is it permissions?
Should I hold off on speaking or? Can you hear me well enough?
Almost like we have a YouTube feed coming through and we've disconnected from that.
Hello?
YouTube that's being picked up somewhere else.
Can you guys hear us now? Can you hear us now?
Hello, can you hear us?
Looks like they've left and hopefully are coming back in. Mr. Mayor, they're back and I think we have audio now.
Yep, can you?
Can you hear us, okay?
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great, hi there, this is Mr. and Mrs. Rankin, my name's Stephen Rankin, I'm here with my wife Alexis.
And hi there, you guys, we are the family that they, that she was just referring to that had concerns with the drive in, drive out off of Ten Mile. I definitely would concur with the architect that it's probably necessary to have one drive in on U stick. Our main concern aside from that is that the area between our fence and the drive in, drive out from Ten Mile is way too close to our fence line. It definitely poses a major safety issue for us and our small children in our backyard. You know, though we live on Ten Mile and that's a risk anybody's willing to take. To have people slowly pulling in and out on such a busy road at all hours of the day makes for a really, really you know, a huge opportunity unfortunately for somebody to get T-bones coming in and out of there. And they're going to go directly into our yard and we have small children in the yard and animals. We ask and would like to politely request that the thirty feet that's going in on the other side.
That'd be on Paul's side, on the west side of the of the fence line?
Yeah, would also be considered for our side as well, especially considering we're going to be the ones dealing with the pulling in and out. Oh, you know, consistently throughout the day and we take a much greater risk of somebody actually flying into our yard because of that.
And on that note, I mean, again, without knowing the exact litigations behind the setbacks of ACHD and the distance that it needs to be away from the corner of Ten Mile and U stick. If it's already under those restrictions and you're doing it as far away from the from the street as possible. Please take into consideration the risk factor that is in place with children and dogs and our family on the other side of that fence. Did a little bit of research leading up to this meeting, you know, just before six o'clock. And as exciting as it's been so far, I must mention that the average length of a car is between fifteen and sixteen feet. So if you just took your average sedan and you're looking at fifteen, sixteen feet, that gives you a reference when you look at twenty feet, how far away that interest is to my fence line. And again, looking into the restrictions of what ACHD has in place. Being as far away from that intersection as possible, if it's still under that restricted code. Please also take into factor that if you can go further away, whether it be thirty or whatever it might be to take the fact, safety factor, you know, at your highest regard. We as as civilians in this area and as, you know, as the worried neighbor, without having to, you know, put up a stink, we just want to make sure that everybody's needs are met here.
Right, thank you very much.
Also, wait, also really quick, one thing I didn't mention is the lights, I'd like to know the height of the lights. One thing that the architect did mention there is she's been in close contact with the neighbors. Little did I know, I live here, I'm here all the time, we work from home oftentimes and never once have we had a knock on the door. Never once have we been called from the architect, so I'm not saying there's lies being put forth, but there has been little to no communication with me. And we share a fence line with this property, I have been in direct contact with the dentist, great guy, we've had an amazing opportunity to meet and chat. And he's been great, we have no no quarrels with the with the with the dentist whatsoever, we want to see this project happen. We just want to make sure that, you know, those two major lights that are closest to our property line, leading out to that, you know, that exit. The height of those, I mean inevitably, everybody, this is going to go right into my backyard.
And right into our master bedroom.
For instance, to give a reference to this, yeah, and in the master bedroom as well, for instance, sorry to cut you off Alexis. Reference to this, you you have to, you have to also consider, when I walk to the, to my south side of the yard, which is right up against that fence line. I can literally see right over the fence, based on the way that the land is 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 shaped and the and the way it's sloped. So when you, again, when you take into factor the lights, I'd love to know the height of those lights and the brightness of those, so we're not blinded every night until, you know, whatever, eleven o'clock or ten o'clock with with the traffic coming in and out of there.
Thank you very much, council, any questions? Joe, would you just like to respond on the light to shed information about our light standards and directional?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, the, any streetlights that are going to be required with this have to be shielded and have to be faced down, they cannot have any light trespassing on any adjacent residential properties with the future CCC application, they have to provide a photometric plan that shows that, that there's no foot candles of light trespassing. I can't speak to the vehicle lights coming in, a lot of people here have those tall trucks, even though they don't go off roading and, you know, get high levels of light in people's fences, but I can't, we can't mitigate that, I will say that staff is amenable to increasing that buffer along the south boundary. ACHD is going to approve it regardless, from my understanding, ten feet shouldn't make a difference, ground, I want to speak for ACHD, but I can't see that they if they had their way, it would be right on the property line, but because we require a buffer. I think they're understanding that if we require a bigger buffer, that they will accommodate that as well.
Now, since they're not here this evening, we can do whatever we want.
I like it. How about that Linder Village, Linder Road overpass?
Thank you. Council, any further questions, sorry? Is there anybody else like provide testimony on this item this time? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and for final comments? Okay. Counsel? Turn this over to you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borden?
Question for Joe, the comment about U stick access, I understand the applicant's request for it, the project probably requires it to be financially viable. The trade off is if it's right in only, it really is going to be a right in, right out. People aren't going to go that way and back up. Right, if they have to turn right, they're probably just gonna
I would.
Those on U stick and or Cherry Lane and Linder. There's one coming out of the old Chicago connection. So that being said, is it your kind of a soft recommendation to make that emergency only bollard? Still be funky if people drive that way and back up?
Councilman Borden? We have project review meetings on these every few weeks, whatever, for the upcoming hearings and that access was one of the only concerns brought up by multiple departments. So I understand the concern, I understand the desire to still want that, but I agree with you, I mean, if someone goes down hundred feet of driveway there, they're going to continue, I would, I guarantee you, I would sneak out. But it, that's why we have that concern. And especially because that's a right hand turn lane, it's not even the lanes of travel right there, so then if someone does have to turn right or trying to turn right there and they're going to head east more, they're going to be crossing multiple lanes of traffic, which we just, we don't want to incentivize that.
If I can make, there's one development that has done this correctly that I'm aware of, it's the corner of Victory and Cole Road and Boise into that commercial development right there where they have very successfully made it one way in only, you cannot get out that way. So if it is something, I think it can be done, but it takes some some, some very concentrated effort to make it appropriate. But it can be accomplished, I promise you, I can't turn left out of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ogland?
Do, would we require signage, you know, not an exit, all those things trying to, you know, and people do what people do, but at the same time, we're still trying to tell them, don't do this, you know, I assume that's going to be required if if that's allowed right in only.
Councilman Ogland, absolutely, we would, I would, I didn't put it in my staff report as a DA condition or a condition of approval because I was recommending it be closed, but I would recommend if you decide to keep it, that requires signage there to make it very clear that this is only an entrance and nobody should try to go out, in addition fire doesn't need that secondary access, I just didn't, I wanted to give them another opportunity to have it, so therefore, if if it's going to not be an emergency access, we can choke down that driveline to the minimum twelve feet, which is for a one way drive aisle. So that would help incentivize people not going down that as well from within the site.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
How would we? How would we approve this with different, a different design aspect that you speak about? Interesting question.
Do a good job. Sorry, I mean, that's, I know it's tough, but.
Mr. Mayor, I will say that I've seen it, I believe in Gramercy, when I went over there for a site visit, they also, they did curbing to try and utilize that to help make it very clear that people cannot enter into that or exit, and that one you will not you will be fighting traffic just to go around the curbing, so I believe additional curbing would be necessary, I did see someone make a left hand turn in that they shouldn't have made. But that, that you're, this, that would not occur because there's the median there, I believe, along U stick. So if if a recommendation was before to keep that, I would recommend including that the applicant work with ACHD to have some curbing there in the edge of the right away.
Councilman Borden?
That discussion, does that change the applicant's desire to make any last comments?
I'm Vince Rigby, I'm the owner of the property.
Can you say your address, please?
My address is four one six three Filomena. We would, we'll do what we need to do to keep it a one way only. If that example that was given is the one that we need to follow, we'll do that. Add extra curbing, signage, whatever we need to do. I also, I would just add that part of the, part of the reason why we'd like to have that access there is is to reduce some of the traffic as as was mentioned, my address. Off of Ten Mile. Any questions for me?
Council, any questions? Thank you. And Joe, I think actually yours was a better example in Gramercy. Those are definite limitations on what way you're going.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borden?
Question back to staff from this discussion, do you have enough specificity to include in the DA modification language? That's worth the right in only
Councilman Borden, I do, I'm making notes, even though I probably won't read them ever again, but I'll, it's up here, I got it.
And Mr. Mayor, question for you.
Councilman Ogland?
And do we need to include anything about the thirty foot on the south side attempting to?
Councilman Ogland, if that's your desire, yes, I would include, I would, you would modify one of the existing conditions regarding the other thirty foot and just saying include the southern boundary as well.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ogland?
All up to that, Joe, we're assuming ACHD would approve that, I mean.
Yes, sir, I would assume because they're.
Contingencies or anything else based?
Correct, because they're allowing the existing buffer, so if we say that the buffer is thirty feet, they they should be able to accommodate that.
With that, council, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ogland?
I move we close the public hearing on file number H twenty twenty dash zero one two two.
Mr. Mayor, second motion?
A motion second to close the public hearing, is there a discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
I don't know if we need, Mr. Mayor, much discussion on this, so.
Councilman Ogland?
I will make a motion that after considering all staff applicant public testimony. I move to approve file number H twenty twenty dash zero one two two as presented in the staff report. And the public testimony of May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, and just for noting modifications that we do require signage, that it's not an exit to U stick road. The appropriate signage that they work with ACHD to find a curbing solution to prevent a right turn on U stick. And that on the south boundary near the entrance, that the thirty foot buffer be in place for the residential area.
Second motion?
I have a motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden, Cavanagh, Strater, Ogland, Burnt?
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you, Joe, for your work this evening.
Is, Mr. Mayor, real quick, before Joe leaves, does Alan owe him lunch or dinner or anything? Oh, you owe him?
Other way around.
There we go, yeah, I got it right, okay, just wanted to clarify before we got started in the next.
Everybody owes my wife dinner.
Council, do we need any, any breaks or do we have any conversation about doing this one this evening? I mean, everyone still seems to be here from this, I know there was a question about it's getting late, if we want to continue this evening or do this tomorrow. But is everyone? Thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh?
Good conversation for council to have, we've tried to refrain from going late. Been a good practice that we followed. And I don't know what the statuses of the applicant and the public. Appreciate that they've been marathoners and sat with us all night, I just don't know if that's the direction council wants to go, if we want to barrel through or or continue this for another point, open to either suggestion.
I guess the first question that was asked was we have a meeting tomorrow evening. If this would be to continue till tomorrow, would that work for everybody in the room? to come back and be part of that? You see some shaken nose, I don't know. The meeting tomorrow is at 6:00, we have one other item.
One of them is pretty quick, one just a, Mr. Mayor, just a like a, like a code text, something.
We had some people shake no this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
I'm just curious, but would it be possible to go ahead and take some public testimony from anyone that really, oh, you, we can't do that, like split it?
We'd have to open the hearing and go through that first process.
Mr. Members of council, you can do that. I would strongly urge you not to do that. It breaks the record up and it makes it much more complicated if you go beyond one or two hearings that you have, it's very disjointed hearing, but you've got some testimony, you haven't had a presentation. It makes it a little bit harder to follow from a record standpoint.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
Maybe we take a comment from the applicant to see what their opinion is.
Definitely need to start there. This is their hearing this evening.
Mayor and counsel, we are open to coming back tomorrow evening. We would ask to be heard first after waiting through his old business, if that's possible.
Is there would there be any concern with that, with how it's noticed for tomorrow?
I mean, Mr. Members of council, the clerk did just ask me that. So you can amend your agenda, you will just have to put on the record why. So you are allowed to do that and you could certainly put it first. Ms. Suggs's application is also tomorrow and that was set over a couple of weeks ago. And then the other one is a is a staff one, so it's totally your decision, it's up to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
If the applicant is unable to, then I think that we can do it tomorrow and we can make it so that you guys are first on the agenda.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. If there's anybody who can't be here tomorrow, we do take remote testimony as we've seen and we have that information. So we, you know, if you, if you want to come up afterwards, make sure we get you all the information in order to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Another suggestion is, you know, we've taken test, recorded audio testimony. It's added on the record, I think there's even some of that on this particular application. So if they're not available at the time, they can record and send it and have it added to the record and maybe even the clerk could play it tomorrow. Just another suggestion, so we can, we want to make sure that we hear all the public testimony.
Okay, now we want to give this due diligence for everybody's purpose so it can be disposed of wisely and clearly.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important, I think that this is, any application is an important application, but it's important to have, you know, to deliberate wisely and effectively. And I know I drank four Diet Cokes tonight, but I, I, I feel like it would be in everyone's best interest if we deliberated about this tomorrow.
So with that, we need to open the public hearing and then continue it till tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so with that, we will open the public hearing for Skybreak Neighborhood H2020-0127. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move that we continue the public hearing on H2020-0127 until June 26, 6:00 p.m.
May?
May.
May 26.
6:00 p.m.
Do I have a second? I have a motion as second to continue this public hearing till tomorrow night to 6:00 p.m. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and this will be continued till tomorrow. Hopefully Alan can be here, oh.
It's on the dock this night.
Yeah, we didn't ask you, Alan, sorry.
Counsel, I had need one more, oh, we actually have.
Or ordinance.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 21-1929. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance related to H2020-0046 Gateway at 10-mile. For annexation of a parcel of land situated in the west one-half of southwest one-quarter, Section 11, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 41.284 acres of land from RUT to R40, high-density residential, 17.273 acres, and CG general retail and service commercial, 24.001 acres, zoning districts in the Meridian City Code. Providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read by title, was it like it's read in its entirety? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Move that we approve ordinance number 21-1929 with the suspension of rules.
I have a motion as second to approve ordinance number 21-1929 under submission of rules. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on our future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Burr.
I move that we adjourn.
Second motion.
Motion as second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.